I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 1st. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a moment of silence for Ron Doolin, who passed away within the last two weeks. He was a member of the tuna club for approximately almost 50 years. He was a homeowner and spent many, many, many years on the island. And I would just like to take a moment to pray for our parents, our children, and our teachers as they work through these difficult times. Today, as you know, is the first day of school. And I'm met with a couple of glitches. I know that they're working frantically to get everybody online and get the kids working. So, parents, we're thinking of you and good luck to all. Also, as you know, the city is making some very serious decisions in the last week and a couple of weeks to come. It's a very sad time for all of us. We love our City of Avalon family and we just wish everybody the best as we move forward. I know there were some people who will not be employed with the city and our hearts go out to you. Also, we know that the staff that will be left in the city will have to work extra hard. And I know that the reduction in staff will impact city services. We will try to do this as gracefully as possible. Amen. And if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Lavelle? Here. Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Are there any announcements or written communications?
Announcements? I just want to remind the public that today was the last day before you get charged a late fee in tickets for golf carts and vehicle registration. The hours are 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and that's Monday through Thursday. We have received written communication, one item on, excuse me, one email on item number six and four on number seven.
Thank you.
Which was provided to all the council.
Yes, thank you. Department head report? Anybody? Yeah, Captain Hawking is coming.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. I'd just like to talk about two noteworthy incidents that happened since the last council meeting. At the last council meeting, we spoke about the possibility of having volunteers out reminding people to put on their face masks. There was an incident on the Catalina Express where a small group of people wouldn't put on their face mask. The boat started to leave. The captain of the boat felt it was unsafe to keep them on the boat. He turned around and before the boat could dock back up to float five, one of the people jumped off the boat and started assaulting one of the people on the boat, the staff that was telling them not to wear a face mask. And it's completely unacceptable. Deputies were already waiting for the boat. We didn't know he was going to jump off before the boat was even tied up. They immediately arrested him and took him to Avalon Sheriff's Station where he was released on a citation because of the Nobel Zero Bell. But he will have a court date and it's completely unacceptable. Another incident that was unacceptable was a hate crime that we had on the island at the Descanso Beach Club. There was two men that were gay. They gave each other a small peck on the lips. And there was somebody that took offense to that and started yelling homophobic slurs at them and threatening them. And the deputies, we got a call on 911. We arrived and immediately took the person into custody. And I can tell you, there was a lot of people over there that were protecting these two men. And it was good to see because that is just completely unacceptable. And we're going to make an arrest every single time for anything like that. So that person is also going to have a court date in the very near future.
Yeah, boy, that's a tough one.
We continue to write citations for masks also. I just turned in a handful to Denise just now. And we keep writing them and go from there. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Did you want to?
I did want to comment. Reading the report in the paper over the weekend, these people who are doing dumb things and getting caught and you're coming out to see them, the fact that you're also giving them a citation for not wearing a mask while they're being stupid is great.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to the deputies. And you guys know what I feel about masks. Everybody needs to wear one, no doubt about it. We don't, I personally don't know if they work, don't work. But the rules say you wear one, doctors wear them, I'm going to wear one. And we're going to do everything we can to get people to wear them. But if you aren't wearing one and you're also doing some shenanigans, that's, we're definitely going to be there to solve that problem and go from there. But thank you very much. I will pass that on to the deputies.
I would just like to make a comment. I know there was one incident on social media where a whole bar was set up with alcohol and whatever on the tops and the bottoms, you know, and on the sand. And there was another big party. I don't know how, I know we've been rather lenient on the alcohol because it doesn't seem to be getting too out of hand. However, when something does that blatant and obvious, I don't know how those aren't seen by the sheriffs if they're doing patrols up and down the beaches and at Step Beach particularly. So I'm trying to warn people not to do that. That's just so blatant, it's insane. But anyway.
Are you talking businesses have set up bars?
No, no, people, people that are bringing in six-foot tables and, go ahead.
Yeah, because that was the other thing I was going to bring up is that I've had people come to me and say, they're bringing their cocktails into stores and walking up and down Front Street. Just because you can buy it in a restaurant to go with your food and take it with you doesn't mean that gives you the right to walk up and down with cocktails in your hand on Front Street, on Clarissa, on Third, wherever. Because I watched them as they walked by with their red party cup. So that was one of the other things I was going to ask if you guys could kind of keep an eye out for.
Yeah, we sure will. That we've known that's been a problem, especially for some of the restaurants that are serving because of the ABC license that now says they can buy it, get in their vehicle, drive to their rental place or wherever. And the problem is, as they're walking there, they're drinking from the drink. The city has contacted a couple of the businesses. We wrote a letter to one of them. And I've talked to ABC regarding one of them, Alcohol Beverage Control. And we will be enforcing the alcohol on the beach.
I mean, I hear it's blatant when they've got a bottle of Jack and they're going like this and passing the Jack around to their friends. That's a little over the top.
Yeah, that's not.
They're going to the lucrester inviting those or going to the lines, you know. So it's those blatant ones and so thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. We will address that, we guarantee. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question, Captain Hawking, as well, for this weekend. Are we having any reserve deputies?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to have four reserve deputies. Two are going to be on day shift to PMs and two are PMs to early morning shift. So we'll have four extra personnel, deputy personnel out there.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Double duty here. So just a couple of things we've got coming up here in the next few weeks that we're working on with the community. The first one, in collaboration with the Rotary, is a cleanup day. We've got two cleanup days slated. Going to be different from the cleanup days we've done in the past where it's been a big get-together. We greet everybody, we have refreshments. The first one will be Thursday, September 10th at 5:00 across the street. You've probably seen the community and we're due for a cleanup. We've scheduled a second one on Saturday, November 14th at 9:00 a.m., again, across the street. As individuals come out, families come out, as soon as they get there, we'll give them the bag. We'll give them, you know, gloves, the necessary tools that they need. And we just send them out on different routes throughout the community with a drop-off point. So again, the 10th of September at 5:00 and then November 14th, which is a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m.
At 9:00.
So please join us for that. And then there's been a group, and it's mainly been Mary Boyd and Grant Anthur. They've been working with American Red Cross on a blood drive. We have scheduled a blood drive at the St. Catherine-Alejandro Church for Thursday, October 1st and then Friday, October 2nd. It's a two-day drive this year using the parasol. Last year, I am told, we had 93 points that we received, donated blood, that had 279 people benefited from that. So it's amazing to see how far that goes. The goal this year on the two-day is 150 points of blood. And the beauty of it is that this year there will be antibody testing as part of giving blood. They'll go through the process and you'll get to results on that as well. I'd like, if I could, a couple sponsors to recognize. But before that, register online. It's at www.redcrossblood.org. And you just go to, I think you put in your zip code, 90704, and it'll take you through. 9 to 3:30, they're taking appointments on both days.
And give me that email address.
It's redcrossblood.org. They've got a handful, more than a handful of people coming back and forth. This group of Bryant and Mary have gone out and contacted a bunch of the hoteliers. So instead of sending staff back and forth the two days, all of them are going to be staying. And so special thanks go out to, let me do the hotels here first. Catalina Island Company, Pavilion, Holiday Inn, Hotel Metropole, Catalina Island Inn, Glenmore Plaza, Seaport Village Inn, Avalon Hotel, and the Hotel Otter. Three nonprofits have stepped up in a big way. And those are the Lions Club with a donation of $1,000. Rotary Club is stepping up with a donation. And the Knights of Columbus with a donation. And so the goal there would be to, whatever other costs are associated with this, donations that come through the city and are paid for the direct cost to the express rides over and a few other expenses that we've got with that. Couple other special thanks, City of Avalon for assisting with it. St. Catherine's Church. And then ABM Parking Services along with Avalon Freight Services and the Catalina Express.
Wow.
Yeah, so kind of a neat program coming up. So with that, any questions?
Just to make sure the times were 9 to 3:30?
9 to 3:30 appointments, yes.
Great, thank you. That takes a lot of coordination. Thank you very much. Okay. Harbor's quiet today? Okay, JJ, thank you. Is sitting there, oh, I'm thinking.
Hi, everyone.
Oh, yeah.
Jordan Monroe, administrative analyst for the City of Avalon Department of Works. We finished up our Five Corners demonstration last week. We're going to keep the survey open until Thursday at noon. So anybody who has any comments, questions, concerns, visit cityofavalon.com/fivecorners. You can also find it from the homepage. We're taking everyone's feedback and input. Getting compiled some responses and answers. And then we'll also be using that as part of our grant application, which is due September 15th, that we expect to fully fund the total project. We came within three points the last round, so we're very hopeful that we'll be able to get it this round. And speaking of another grant, if everybody remembers the recycle bins we received from CalRecycle, part of that grant was education outreach and public input. Mostly just kind of educating the public on the importance of recycling, diversion, and these recycle bins. So fortunately, we have, I have to get out of this presentation. So we got, we'll have some promotional materials coming out that people will be able to see, flyers and other information just to kind of help people understand. And we produced this video with Justice Ramming. He came out and did it. We'll have it on our website at cityofavalon.com/RRR. We have a longer version, but we decided to show you the 38-second version instead of the three-minute version here. Give me one second, let me change the view. Catalina Island is a beautiful place. Whether you visit for a day, stay overnight, or lived here for generations, everyone is a part of our island community. What we don't want to see from them that part of our island are your recycled products. Please don't fill our landfill with bottles and cans. Using one of the over 100 recycling bins we have along the waterfront and in our parks, keep your trash separated from the recyclables. We will send your recyclables off the island to be processed and maybe even come back so you can enjoy the view or even to use as a bin to recycle your bottles and cans. Thank you for doing your part by recycling. Catalina Island is a beautiful place. Whether you visit for a day.
So good morning. Good morning. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a brief COVID-19 update. Hopefully, this will dovetail real nicely into Dr. Davis's presentation as well. Did you want him to go first? Well, you know what, I will come back. I'll let Dr. Davis go and then I'll give a brief update to the county. Sorry, I jumped the gun on that.
That was our miscommunication, it's okay. I thought yours would play real nicely right after.
Thank you.
Sorry, Michael. Are you ready to go to the presentation then?
Oh, yes, I am.
We didn't go to your reports or anything. Do you want to wait till after? Let's go to the presentation.
Do you want to do, I don't know if Dr. Davis is just sitting around. Do you want to do him now?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an introduction for him?
Dr. Davis will provide an update on COVID-19 situation.
Yeah, I'm expecting somebody to introduce him.
Dr. Davis, are you there?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can just hear you.
Okay.
But I hear myself echoing.
Jordan, can you fix that? For the public, we have Dr. Daniel Davis at the Catalina Island Medical Center. He will be giving us a third presentation on the coronavirus. Go ahead, Dr. Davis. We'll see if the echoing stops.
Is that my cue?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay, are you just hearing an echo or?
You're good, you're good.
I can just proceed.
We do not hear an echo.
What was that?
Boy, that was a delay on that one, wasn't it?
I think it was a little off the top, ran into Jordan's computer for me to be able to hear.
Can you tell him just a minute, we're waiting for Jordan to give us the signal.
So Dr. Davis, I have a question. When we're looking at this picture of the coronavirus, do they color them that way so that we can see them better? Or are they just, are they really red and blue?
I can, I can hear that you're asking about the coronavirus picture, but it's coming in garbled, so I can't quite understand.
I was wondering, I was just wondering if it was color-enhanced to be red and blue.
If someone will translate it into Jordan's microphone. Because I can hear you, but it's on someone else's computer. I can hear Jordan pretty well, but everyone else sounds like they're underwater.
No problem. Do you think it's colored in here?
Dr. Davis, we're waiting for Jordan to figure out the technical difficulties.
Okay, I can hear you, I can hear that person. All right, so he's calling, he's calling the number. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear you as well. And can you see, can you see the slides on the screen? You must have, because I heard somebody say something about a blue coronavirus.
I was just wondering if the red and blue of the virus is color-enhanced.
This one is probably color-enhanced, but you can, you can pick antibodies that are fluorescent in different colors that attach to different proteins or different parts of the virus. So you could have a red antibody attaching to the spike protein and something more green attaching to the body. But I think this one's probably color-enhanced.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, proceed, please.
All right, so you can see my slides and you can hear me now. And I can hear you guys. So thanks for having me back. It seems like it's been years since I last went to the group because time seems to be on a strange time grid right now. But I'm going to try and give you a little bit of update and perspective and maybe even a prediction or at least some possibilities as to what I think might happen over the next couple of months. And then I'll hopefully have plenty of time for folks to ask questions. Okay, see if I can advance. There we go. All right, so I'm going to briefly go over the numbers, but I'm going to pose some questions that I'm not sure anyone has answers for, that at least should make you a little bit wary depending on who you're listening to. And then reflect that back to the Catalina situation. And then again, try and give you some perspective and some predictions on what we think might happen over the next few months going into 2021. All right, so here are the latest numbers. These are graphs that I've shown you before with the daily new cases on the top and the daily deaths on the bottom. So this is not cumulative. These are, you know, how many new cases and deaths are reported each day, with each one of those lines representing a day. And so you probably can sense that for most of the summer, there's been some angst reflected in the press and from, especially in California here, over what we were calling a surge. And you can see on the right-hand side of the graph that there were quite a number of new cases and quite a number of new deaths. For those who have been following along with my previous presentations, this is not a logged graph, this is linear. So the difference between the lines is consistent. And that's important in trying to interpret these. But there's no question that if you look on the right-hand side of the graph, which represents the summertime versus the left-hand side, which represents the springtime, it seems like things were quite a bit worse, particularly with regard to new cases throughout the summer. And we're going to kind of dive deeper into that in a second. Now, one thing that I like to point out that gives me at least a little bit of confidence in these graphs is that there is a little bit of a lag about a couple of weeks between a spike in cases and a spike in deaths. And that's what you would expect because it takes several weeks for someone to contract and then become symptomatic from COVID to actually get sick enough to potentially die. And so you see the little humps on the top followed a couple of weeks later by humps on the bottom. And if you follow this out, you can sort of track along. And so there's definitely a relationship between spikes in new cases and then two weeks later spikes in death. That means we'll have to take these graphs seriously. But again, I'm going to ask a few questions that I'm not sure anyone has the answer for. Now, we received a request to produce some data from Catalina. And there are some concerns given that we have such a small number of cases that you could identify individuals. But I clumped them into two-week blocks just for this presentation. And you can see that Catalina's daily, or in this case, bi-weekly new cases follow along with what was happening in California as a whole, for the most part, where there was a spike in late July, early August. And now it seems to be tapering off a little bit. So we are essentially a microcosm of the larger population in the state. Knock on wood, we have not had deaths, so we definitely don't track along with that. And let's hope that it stays that way. And I'll briefly summarize the response from the medical center. And while that's definitely my clinical home, I also am going to take some liberties in talking about the medical center as if I'm an outsider because that gives me some latitude to be able to give them compliments. Because I think it's been a very impressive performance from all levels at the medical center for something that nobody had any historical perspective on. And that we've essentially been able to perform what everyone wished they could do, which is contact tracing and try and track down as many individuals as possible who came into contact with known COVID-positive individuals and help them isolate as best they can. And although I know that there are criticisms and concerns about whether individuals were following the guidelines the way they're supposed to, we have not seen substantial community spread, again, knock on wood, in Avalon or on the island, that most of the cases have come from outside the community. And even those that spread within the community did not lead to outbreaks like we've seen over town or even in other countries where one individual passes it on to 50 or 60 or 100 or more individuals. And so for the most part, the outbreaks, while they certainly produced a lot of anxiety, have not led to widespread dissemination of COVID. And like I said, a lot of the cases that tested positive on the island were contracted off the island. When we know about cases, they've been monitored and triaged appropriately. And that involves coordination between the emergency department, depending on where the case was identified in the clinic or if a patient has become sick enough to be transferred off the island and backwards with the clinic coordinating with the emergency department to safely transfer. And that when that has occurred, the patients have been sick enough to warrant admission, but not so sick that they couldn't be treated effectively and recover. And so I think from all counts, the contact tracing and then the monitoring and triaging of patients has gone exceedingly well. And again, although I've been part of that, I would point the finger at Jason and at Dr. Saparia from UC Irvine as being the primary coordinators of that response, which I think has been fantastic. And because we have a facility that has both a hospital and a long-term care facility as well as the clinic and an emergency department, all under the same roof, we've prioritized keeping the long-term care residents. we've prioritized keeping the long-term care residents safe. And again, knock on wood, a lot of knocking on wood tonight. They've thus far remained safe, and we've been able to keep everyone sequestered. And so, again, I'm very pleased and impressed as an outsider looking in with the response and as someone on the inside, it's been an incredibly rewarding experience to work with this team. Which if there's a bright spot in the pandemic, it's that we really have come together as a team. Now, let's dive a little bit deeper into the data. So I call that summer summary, just to play on words a little bit here. And I want to try and reflect and maybe scratch my head a little bit on the disconnect between the official statistics and our clinical experience. So if we go back to our graph of daily new cases, and you look at the summertime, again, represented there on the right, versus the springtime represented on the far left, where you see March and April. And you compare that to my favorite graph, which is the EMS medical director for Riverside County and for several of the air ambulance, the helicopter bases in Southern California. I get access to a whole different set of data. And we're gonna compare the two, because they're quite a bit different. But here you see that I call wave one, which is the initial appearance of coronavirus in California. And then there's a bit of a lull, although it's not really reflected well in the graph. And then this impression that there's been a second wave that's even worse, you know, perhaps even five to 10 times worse than wave one through most of the summer and just now starting to wane a bit. And compare that to my favorite graph of all, which is the influenza-like illnesses in the emergency departments and EMS calls, 911 calls. What you're seeing here is the previous year, 2018-19 season with dashed lines, compared to the current season, 2019-20, in solid lines, with red representing emergency department visits and blue representing EMS calls. And you see the prominent solid red peak in December, January, and early February that represents influenza itself. That was before we really saw significant coronavirus. And I know a lot of patients have come to the clinic and hospital thinking they may have had something that sounds a lot like coronavirus back in December or even back in November. But certainly in December, January, and February, none of those folks have tested positive or indicated that they had antibodies. So it looks like most of what we saw back in December, January, or February was really influenza. That started to drop away toward the end of February, beginning of March. And then you see right in the middle of the screen, in solid red, the initial spike of coronavirus, where we had 1,200 emergency department visits a day, and this represents Riverside County, because that's where I'm a medical director, but the same data could be presented for any of the Southern California counties. And a similar hump in EMS runs down there in the solid blue at the bottom. Then a lull, and then you see in June, July, and August, a hump, but a much smaller hump, about a fifth the size of what we saw in March and April. And that's really interesting, because the summertime new cases of coronavirus were about five times higher than in the spring, and yet the EMS visits or EMS runs and emergency visits are about five times lower than what we saw in the spring. And so there's your blue, here's your wave one, and here's your wave two. But let's lay them on top of each other. As you can see, I kind of went to town with the graph here. So now we're seeing that all the months match up here. And you see with that first spike in ED visits that correlated with a small spike in new cases. And then you can track the two little humps there in ED visits and new cases there. So they definitely match up as far as the pattern goes. And even if we look at deaths, so now I just switched over to looking at deaths, we see the same sort of overall pattern, but we still see a reversal from the summer to, from the spring to the summer. And so a lot of us are scratching our heads when the numbers would indicate that things are twice as bad, five times as bad now through the summer. And yet our experience in the emergency department and the hospitals and the EMS has not matched what we see with the numbers. So how do we explain this? Well, I don't want to go too deep down this rabbit hole, but clearly there is a politicization of this pandemic. And while I suspected that was already the case, I have a dear colleague who is part of the government and the public health department in Southern California, who will remain nameless, but he said that the quote that everyone is citing to each other is, "Don't let a good pandemic go to waste", which is fairly black humor there, because I don't know that anybody thinks the pandemic is necessarily good. But it doesn't take long. In fact, as I prepared for this lecture, the easiest slide to create was simply putting in Democrat, Republican, coronavirus. And thousands, if not tens of thousands of graphs popped up from both sides of the aisle, trying to demonstrate why the other one is mishandling the pandemic. And it's really disappointing that not only is their rhetoric suggesting, and you could maybe call it constructive criticism, although I'm not sure constructive is the right word, but it seems to have spilled even into the way that we collect and report data. And so that brings up the sort of second piece of that puzzle. Is the data that we're getting actually accurate? Or are there incentives to over or under-report? And I think we've seen that played out in the news. And so that's why I felt that I had to find multiple sources of data to get a clear picture of what's going on. And I try and present all different types of data. But I still am scratching my head a little bit as to how the spring versus the summer is so dramatically different, depending on which source of data you access. And we're gonna dive deeper into that in a second. Now, one thing we have seen that's quite interesting to me is the change in the source of the cases. And specifically, what I mean by that is that it appears that the United States, which is the left-hand, unfortunately this came out in the same color, but the initial spike that you see on the left represents the United States and a very early surge in COVID cases, followed by Mexico, which didn't have quite the surge, and it was delayed somewhat, which is why Mexico, on the very far right there, is still trailing behind the United States. I think most people suspect we probably exported it to Mexico. But once Mexico got up and running, they quickly caught up. And we saw that in our data, again, with access to data that aren't necessarily on the typical websites. But what you're seeing here is the case rate per 10,000 citizens at a point in the last month or so, where you see clearly along the border, there was a surge in cases. And in fact, if you look at metro areas across the country, El Centro is number two in the country, behind only Huntsville, Texas, which is smack in the middle of Texas, I'm not sure what happened there. And if you look at counties in California, Imperial County is by far the highest number of cases per thousand citizen. And I think that reflects, not surprisingly, cases coming across from Mexico, either US citizens or not. But either way, cases coming across. And in fact, for me, as the medical director for the helicopters in that area, it's not an uncommon occurrence to get roped in up in the middle of the night with a COVID patient being transferred from El Centro. And poor El Centro Hospital was so invaded, they were putting out a plea to any hospitals in California, including central and northern California, that would take their patients. And I like this quote, that at baseline, they might transfer a patient every other day out of their hospital. And that once the pandemic got going, they were transferring a patient every two or three hours. And so I think part of what we've seen through the summer is the delay in cases that were coming from Mexico, because they, the pandemic hit them a little bit later than it did us. And I think now they're starting to get on top of that, and El Centro is starting to clear out. Now, the other interesting thing is the change in the mortality. Although you did see a spike in deaths and new cases in the summertime, there was a distinct decrease in mortality. And so I'm gonna go back to these same graphs. And this is something you can do at home, if you want to play along, because these are available to everyone. But if we look at these same graphs I've been looking at, and we look at the fact that the spike in deaths was about two weeks behind the spike in cases, then we can look at the peak in cases in the spring, which was about 2,000 a day, and the peak in deaths in the spring, which was about 100 a day, and roughly calculate a mortality rate. Now, that's not the perfect way to do it. Epidemiologists would roll over in their graves. But it's a quick and dirty way to get a sense of what mortality looks like. And you can see that mortality early on was about 5%, which is actually the average across the world. And then when you get over to the summertime, where the peak was about 10,000 patients a day, and the peak in deaths is about 200 a day, just to make the numbers easy, which equates to about a 2% death rate. So is this real? Are we really seeing that the virus, or the chance of dying from the virus is going down? Or how do we explain this? I would love to be able to say that we are doing a better job treating patients, but the few sort of new therapies that you've seen hit the press have not really had the impact that could explain such a dramatic drop. Sure, remdesivir was approved somewhere in between the spring and the summer, and it's being used for most patients who are hospitalized and certainly those in the ICU with COVID. But it was actually being used long before that for most patients in Southern California as part of clinical trials. So I don't think that quite explains it. Dexamethasone or Decadron was published as a potential therapy by the Brits. And again, that had some impact on patients who were on ventilators, which was the ones that died. But again, the impact can explain such a dramatic difference. I think most people believe it probably has to do with the fact that the patients testing positive now are oftentimes minimally or completely asymptomatic. And that when you start getting a large number of asymptomatic cases, then your denominator goes up, and the few deaths that occur are relatively smaller compared to the larger number of patients that are testing positive, and that involves the contact tracing we talked about earlier. But a very tempting thing to talk about, and that's the comment on this, is the fact that the virus is mutating. It's supposed to mutate, that's kind of what it does. That's how it became able to infect us in the first place, is that it mutated. And if we learn anything from SARS back 10, 15 years ago, we should expect that this virus is gonna mutate over a period of months. And we've already been able to show that that is the case through various genetic laboratories. We were then part of that, that I pulled just from the last couple of days, yesterday in fact, about the Malaysians demonstrating that the strain that they have is different now than it was even just a few weeks and months ago. And that particular strain, when the press gets a hold of it, loves to sensationalize it. At first, they publish it with this picture of some sort of action figure protecting a woman and her child from deadly coronavirus coming in from the right, because this mutation has made it more infectious. And very deep in the article is also commentary that it's much less virulent. It doesn't tend to kill people nearly as often, but it's easier to pass around. And those two things are probably related. If you have a less virulent strain, then people are walking around who aren't really that sick or may not even realize that they're infected. And so they're able to contact 10, 20, 50, 100 people over the course of their illness and pass it along. The virus really doesn't want to be that virulent. It doesn't want to kill us. It just wants us to have snot coming out of our noses so that we can pass it along to each other. But it doesn't really want us to feel bad enough to lay in bed all day where we can't contact as many people. So the perfect virus is one that produces minimal symptoms and is easily spread. Needs a few muggers and snot to make us sneeze and cough every now and then to make sure that it can be spread. But otherwise, it really doesn't want to hurt us. And that's exactly what happened with SARS. So it's possible that this would be the fate of this coronavirus. We can't necessarily plan based on an expectation that it will mutate, but it certainly is following a pathway that would suggest that it's gonna continue to do so. So what should we expect heading into the fall? Will the flu season, the traditional sort of November, December through February, March, include a spike in cases? Well, we thought that there would be a break from COVID in the summer, because we tend to think of coronaviruses as being primarily wintertime cold viruses. And we certainly didn't see much of a temperature effect in the summer. Does that mean then there won't be an inverse temperature effect in the winter? Well, the main thing that produces flu season for us is not the temperature outside directly, but the fact that when it drops below 60 degrees in California, we tend to go indoors. The kids go back to school, et cetera. And so clustering indoors will likely produce a spike in influenza, as well as anticipated a spike in coronavirus, particularly for not doing the things that we're supposed to with regard to masking and hand-washing, et cetera, and maintaining some distance. And we probably will, as we have every year, see a spike in influenza. Now, maybe it won't be as bad this year, because the same measures that prevent the spread of coronavirus will also prevent the spread of influenza. But the same thunder of clustering that's prevalent with influenza every year will probably lead to some transmission of coronavirus as well. So I'd be surprised if we don't see some spikes as we head back indoors. It is now documented that you can have coronavirus as well as other things. That includes bacterial infections like pneumonia, but it also includes other viruses, including influenza. At the very beginning, when we did have a test for coronavirus, we would exclude coronavirus by testing people for influenza. And if they came up positive, we said, "These symptoms are probably influenza, not coronavirus", and we probably won't be able to say that going into this group, but fortunately we can test for both now. And here's the million-dollar question, or billion-dollar and maybe trillion-dollar question. What about a vaccine as well? First, let's talk about the influenza vaccine. This is probably a year, if you're on the fence, that you should just go ahead and get it. Because the last thing we need is influenza and coronavirus together. And although, you know, the effectiveness of the influenza vaccine varies from year to year, I'm gonna be first in line to get my flu shot, just to take that one off the table as much as I can, or certainly if I contract influenza, minimize the symptoms. So that brings up the possibilities for the horizon of coronavirus. We talked about mutations. I would love it if it mutated. A lot of vaccine-making companies would cry, and who knows, maybe we wouldn't even find out. I think there's gonna be a lot of push for vaccination regardless. But what about that vaccine? Well, it looks like it will, there will be something approved in October, only because the election is at the beginning of November. I think there's a lot of pressure to get something out there, whether you agree with that or not. It's probably gonna happen. And the drug companies are going in big with this one. Not only has the research gone at a blistering pace, to where we have legitimately several dozen candidate vaccines, using various techniques, but also the focusing on that spike that we said and read on the title slide. But the companies that own the patents for these have teamed up with the big names, the Merks and the Pfizer's and et cetera. And they are making literally millions, tens of millions of vaccines, even before they've demonstrated themselves effective or not. They're going all in with the bet being that the early small trials and the demonstration that these vaccines do produce an antibody response that looks a lot like somebody who recovered from COVID, and even a T cell response, which are the cells that ultimately make the antibodies. a T-cell response, which are the cells that ultimately make the antibodies, um, or produce the, the stimulus to make the antibodies. Um, but that, uh, the response looks close enough to somebody who recovered, in some cases even better, that they believe that these will work, and they're going to make so many vaccines that we should be able to vaccinate a whole lot of folks very early on. I suspect we will allow to healthcare workers and people who are high-risk patients, not necessarily high-risk of getting it, but high-risk of complications if they were to get it. And so we'll probably see nursing home, um, patients, we'll see patients who have comorbidities that would predict, um, intubation or death. And those folks will probably have the opportunity to get vaccinated before the end of the year. And that would be an incredible feat for science to be able to pull that off. But everything seems on track. And I would be surprised if we don't start seeing widespread vaccinations before the end of the year, and limited deployment, maybe even before Halloween, certainly before, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Now, this vaccine will not be perfect. I can guarantee you that upfront. It looks pretty darn good in the animal studies. We don't have a lot of data from actual patients, but the antibody response makes it look pretty good. But we've never seen a perfect vaccine. And these types of viruses are tricky. And so I think we will be happy if we get anywhere above 50% effectiveness. And if we get close to 75 or 80%, that will be a heroic victory for the vaccine. Now, it may still be good enough, and there's two ways that it can be good enough. It may, even if it doesn't stop someone from getting coronavirus, it may turn it into just a little bit of a cold or even a mild flu. And if we can get enough people vaccinated, it will actually have a hard time being transmitted from person to person. If you remember, six months ago, we were hoping that there were going to be enough asymptomatic carriers that recovered, and that would produce herd immunity, that is enough people that have antibodies against it, um, from already having contracted it, that it wouldn't be able to trans, uh, transmit through the community. But it looks like at best, we're sitting at around 10 or, 10 or so percent. And that might, might even be a little bit optimistic. And so I don't think we're anywhere close to a point where we're going to see herd immunity from actual contraction of coronavirus. And so the vaccine, uh, will be necessary. The other big question mark is how long immunity will last. If you watch the, the papers and, and the news reports, um, you'll see that there are now a couple of patients who have had coronavirus twice. There's not a lot of detail on whether the second time through wasn't so bad compared to the first time through, but it documented that they had antibodies, they disappeared, and then they got sick again. And that unfortunately is one of the things we've come to expect with coronavirus antibodies. They don't seem to last as long as for other diseases like polio. And so we will likely have to get immunized, uh, on at least an annual basis. And the initial immunization involves a shot followed by another one a month later, um, just to get that initial response up and running. So this may end up being an annual kind of thing, maybe even more often than that, at the beginning until it disappears from the earth, or at least we don't see significant disease anymore. You've also heard us talk about various treatments, um, remdesivir being the initial one approved, and then some other therapies, uh, like, uh, dexamethasone, a steroid, um, that are used for the thickest patients. The problem is that they have to be, at least the remdesivir has to be given intravenously. You've also heard things like using the blood from people who have recovered, um, and that's probably part of why they're testing when we, uh, have blood drives, to see if there are people who have antibodies that maybe could use their plasma to treat people who are just getting the disease and it, and maybe keep them from having to be intubated or even dying. Um, but again, that has to be given intravenously. And so we're really holding out for an oral agent. And there is one that I was talking about six months ago, that's gotten all the way to its final clinical trials, and we'll see how it goes. Um, we're very hopeful because it appears to be well tolerated, and at least in animals, is highly effective at preventing progression of disease. Um, and then you're seeing a lot of, uh, studies that are looking at existing drugs, a lot of them are either rheumatoid arthritis or malaria, which often are the same drug, interestingly, um, but repurposing those to see if they might work against coronavirus. And so there has been some small steps forward, um, but we really haven't seen, uh, the major move forward that we're waiting for. And I think the fall will probably bring us to the end of the trials that will tell us whether, uh, some of these drugs are going to be available. And that could be a game changer as well. So the combination of a vaccine and the possibility of new drugs, including oral, oral agents, uh, may make the fall and winter much more tolerable than we originally thought. All right. So here you see a soapbox. I'm going to put my feet on it. So I'm going to give you my two cents, whether you want them or not. I've tried to sort of stay out of the political fray, um, but I know people feel strongly on both sides. So when you try and stay down the middle, uh, what ends up happening is both sides think you're favoring the other side. But that's okay. I can handle it. Um, and my impression is that we are doing okay. Uh, if I had to give us a grade, maybe a B minus or a C plus, uh, we definitely weren't as prepared as we should have been. And that is not a Republican or a Democrat failure. It is not a federal or a local government failure. That is an American failure because we feel like these things aren't supposed to happen here. Um, and, uh, and that idea of exceptionalism leads to complacency. And there is no one in public health who doesn't recognize that, to some degree, we got caught with our pants down and that we didn't have everything in place. And in fact, we aren't even sure who is supposed to take the lead on stuff. We know who gets blamed, but the way that public health is supposed to work is that it acts on a local level for things like pandemics. So we should see a local, and that would be a county level, um, in California, which is huge. In other states, it could be a statewide level, public health, taking a lead role on decisions about locking things down and opening things up. The federal government is supposed to focus on making sure there are ample supplies of things, making sure there's testing, which I think is one of the big failures, uh, at the federal level, and then providing scientific expertise, coordinating, and making sure that each state or, um, county has exactly what they need and, and playing kind of a chess game of moving resources around. Um, but that isn't something we've had to deal with before. We were largely untouched by SARS. And the last time we really had a pandemic was over 100 years ago. And it's amazing you can see how similar our response is now as it was 100 years ago, because we were just as unprepared then as we are now. We've also seen a difference, and there's some really interesting graphs that people are interested in this, um, that we don't really like being told what to do. And for some reason, masking has become a political statement, or I should say, the lack of masking is kind of like a "don't tread on me" slogan. And it's really kind of odd, because in other countries, and I get to travel all around a lot, um, and lecture, and so I was able to see at the beginning of the pandemic, a little bit of this, they actually are glad to have advice from scientific experts saying, here's what we know, here's what we think you should do. They say thank you, and they go and do it, as opposed to, you can't tell us what to do, so we're going to flaunt the fact that you can't tell us what to do, and wear the mask on our chin, or hang it from our rearview mirror, like I see over town here, anything but what would actually be good for the health of the individual, or certainly the people in their household. That being said, it always is interesting to see how quickly we adapt to the new normal, and how quickly, um, designer masks become a thing, masks with faces and mouths on them, and all sorts of interesting stuff, or even masks with political statements on them. Um, and so, uh, that's my first comment. So we're doing all right. Um, anybody who's in public health would have said, we are not ready. And I think this has proved out. I don't think we realized how different Americans would react to advice. And I certainly didn't anticipate how political it would become. And maybe that should have been, um, expected in an election year. Um, I am impressed with how quickly science has stepped up. Maybe that's because I see myself as a scientist. But given that it usually takes 10-plus years to create a vaccine, and we're going to be able to do it in 10, 10-minus months, it is really going to be a story. And I think as we look backwards, it will be, um, the big victory, uh, of this pandemic, is that quickly we're able to respond to it. And again, I'm going to take the liberty on my soapbox to pat, uh, the medical center on its back, uh, because we really have served a role as a public health entity as well, the medical facilities, um, and the team that's come together, particularly with the leadership. So the last little piece, when I went back to the very first presentation I gave at the beginning of March, I found exactly the same lessons, with one exception at the bottom here. I'll show you. You know, this is what I said back in March. This is a critical point, because we don't know what's going to happen with the flu season, and we don't know for sure that we'll have a vaccine or a therapy. So this is the point where I would say, hang in there another couple of months, and I'm hopeful that this will be, um, on its heels, and we'll be able to start moving out of this whole thing. But don't use this point to become complacent. We have a lot of vulnerable people. And as I've started working in primary care here, I had no idea how many folks are in the community with diabetes and hypertension and a history of heart disease, and a history of lung disease, and certainly I probably could have predicted some of the, uh, obesity. But, uh, nevertheless, there are a lot of folks here, and they live with folks who are out there working two or three jobs that are in contact with folks who are testing positive. And that's what I just don't want to see, is somebody who doesn't realize that they have symptoms, they're hanging out with someone, they realize they're having symptoms, and they come back and bring it to their father or mother or grandmother, grandfather or grandmother. And so you really have to hang in there, and there is an end in sight. So try and work with us. Again, you know, work with the hospital. We've tried to be flexible. We've really gone out of our way to try and make sure we can do the best testing available. And we probably have better testing than most university hospitals over town right now. Um, check the website, you have patient, patient. Um, and the last thing, the only thing I added to this slide was to support the medical center and each other through this. Um, while it's natural that people, when they're anxious, um, start to look at the behavior of others, and if it's different, um, criticize them either because they think they're not taking it seriously enough, or because they're taking it too seriously. Um, but realize that everyone's fighting their own battle here, that people are doing things for different reasons. Um, but, uh, you can always take care of yourself. And I stay with my, my contention that with my 1,500 paramedics and EMTs, and my 1,500 flight crews across the country, by just simply wearing masks and washing their hands and doing the stuff they're supposed to do, we haven't, knock on the wood, again, had a single transmission from a patient to one of our workers. And so I remember, I heard someone make the comment about that they weren't sure whether masks do or don't work. And certainly not all masks are the same. That is definitely true. Um, but all of them do something. And as you get to things like three ply of, of material, they come pretty darn close to the masks, uh, that we're using on the front lines, where our faces are right in the face of someone coughing, and they're sticking tubes down their throat, et cetera. So I'm off my soapbox, and now I'm happy to answer questions. Hopefully be able to hear them, or you can read them, or repeat them. Um, but again, thank you for inviting me back and for your attention. And, uh, hang in there, because that's important for us.
Well, thank you. And you know you're welcome to come back anytime. I get nothing but accolades off, off of the good information that you send. And Michael, do we have anybody that's called in?
I don't.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, probably, uh, I don't know who better, Jason or Dr. Davis, but, um, could you just reiterate for the public who's watching about, um, what the numbers, the testing numbers here on Catalina, being only those that have been tested here, and not residents here that are tested on the mainland?
Um, yeah, I mean, Jason is the one who enters the data. And, and, um, even the, the cases that I'm aware of have also received tests here, only because at the beginning we were trying to, um, prove that people were no longer infectious. And that was before we realized that, um, people were from their tests positive for months and months. So even folks that, um, were essentially diagnosed off the island had positive tests here. Um, and so I don't know if, if, if somebody were treated by our providers here that had a positive test from elsewhere, uh, I'm not sure how many of those folks there are. And Jason would probably be the one to answer whether, um, we would note those folks anywhere. But my impression is that we're only posting the patients in whom we have a confirmatory positive test, but with the knowledge that we may test some of those folks, even if they had a, um, an initial test. I don't know if Jason is anywhere nearby that he would come in.
Yeah. So the data that we supply, we only have knowledge of the, of the patients that receive tests from Catalina Island Medical Center. If you go over town, we do not under, we don't have any knowledge of that data, or what's, what the results are, or anything. So, um, and I would also like to say that the turnaround time for testing has vastly improved. Uh, so there really is no reason to go over town to receive testing, because we can provide it rapidly. And, you know, your ability to pay doesn't matter.
Right. Good question. Go ahead.
And we will certainly take care of it.
And then, um, the other one was, I, I've seen some threads on this, and honestly, it just gets so nasty on Facebook that I don't read all the comments anymore when it starts to go downhill. But there's a difference between, um, reporting tests that have come back positive, and there's a lot of reasons and HIPAA reasons why you can't report active cases versus, uh, recovered cases. Can you just re-explain why we don't do that? And...
Right.
I think you've answered it online, so I apologize if you have, but...
As far as HIPAA covers, it doesn't matter as to whether we're releasing a patient name or not releasing a patient name. Let's take, for example, uh, if you had coronavirus, and you said, oh, you went on Facebook, you said, "I have coronavirus." And then, uh, two weeks down the road, we tested you, and we saw that you had antibodies, and we were, you know, let's say we were going to post that you're now cured. Well, we're announcing to everybody that Cindy is cured. So we're providing medical information that somebody can put one plus one and figure out what your medical condition is. And that is not our role to inform the community about individuals. And so it sets us up for a liability. It sets, you know, firstly from fines and penalties from the federal and the state government, but it also sets us up with, uh, legal liability with a possible lawsuit from you.
And, and I guess just to further discuss that, the way that I've seen it, for example, um, Johns Hopkins and the LA County sites and some others, it's not necessarily saying, um, recovered. It's, it's listing, these are the number of, these are the number of positive cases. And unfortunately, there's another column of, of those that we've lost due to the virus. So I, I think it's, the question keeps getting asked over and over, why can't we, why can't we do that? But it, but that's not, the recovery number is not a separate column anywhere that I've seen on any other county statistics or whatnot.
Well, and then, you know, how, how can you necessarily tell if someone's fully recovered? I mean, if you've had the coronavirus, and three weeks later, you're still shedding those cells. And if we tested you for coronavirus, you'd test positive. So, you know, there's, there's just a lot of leeway in this whole thing. Um, and there is a vast difference between the data that Johns Hopkins produces compared to us. Because we are rural, we have to be more careful about the data that we put out there, um, due to the fact that we have small numbers. And it's easy to figure out... due to the fact that we have small numbers and it's easy to figure out what's going on. Oh, Cindy hasn't come out of her house in three days. You know, you've seen this within the community, that people trying to figure it out. I mean, and the reason why I want to keep the data the way it is, is because of some of the, plus some of the things I've seen on Facebook where the community is taking the data. So a number of weeks ago, we had a day where it went up by three and at the exact same time, the city closed the summer camp. And then people were posting online that, that three children were testing positive of COVID, which is completely inaccurate. And so then if I hop on and say that is inaccurate, you can't, that information is incorrect, well then when somebody puts something then out there and I don't say that's inaccurate, I'm virtually saying you're correct with your hypothesis. Now, I want to just stop the rumors and the finger pointing with who has had COVID and who has gotten, you know, who's cured from it. It's none of our business. Just wear a mask, stay outdoors, don't go indoors without a mask and spend a lot of time with a whole bunch of people indoors and you pretty much aren't going to get it.
Yeah. And I would underscore that point, but I would also kind of thank the community because we are not a public health, we have no public health jurisdiction. We are performing this contact tracing function only on the goodness of the hearts of people who have tested positive, being willing to talk to people around them, whether it's their boss, their family, their friends, and have other people come in to get tested. And we, as a medical center, were able to absorb, you know, literally hundreds of tests in a matter of a day or two. But that wasn't us going out and saying, "Hey, one of your employees tested positive, you need to send all your employees to us." It was completely the other way around because we're not allowed to do that. And so all we can say is when somebody tests positive, encourage them for the sake of the health of the community and to those around them and those they work with, to let people know. And that, as I said at the beginning, we have been able to stop these little miniature outbreaks from becoming big deals. And that, for the most part, it's just a handful of folks and they're people that they're very close to that have tested positive and then it stops. And that's much more effective than what's happened on the mainland where public health is able to perform that function and go track people down. And we've been able to do it without, without that kind of jurisdiction. So I think that's not just tooting the horn of the medical center, it's really more a reflection of the community being as willing despite what's posted on Facebook, despite the possibility that they're going to be ostracized or feel like, you know, there's a red letter on their front door now for COVID. Despite all of that, we've been able to do contact tracing on the goodness of everyone's heart and really, you know, perform the kind of public health that every other community in this country wishes they could perform. So despite that it's disheartening to see the rhetoric online, I think we should step back and look at the 10,000-foot view and say, "There's probably not another community that could pull this off." And so this has been a tremendous victory, even if there is some expected, you know, infighting and finger pointing and, you know, people are nervous and anxious and they're gonna, you know, look for someone to blame and they're gonna be upset when they think things don't go the way they're supposed to. But for the most part, knock on wood, up until now, the first six months, this has gone amazingly well.
And since I've isolated Cindy with all my examples, I just want to put out there, I have absolutely no knowledge as to whether she has COVID or not.
So Dr. Davis, I just wanted to make a comment. You were asking early on about, you know, how the numbers, when they, early on, the death rate was like at 5% and now the death rate is like 2%, right?
Right.
So, but at the beginning of this whole thing, weren't the institutional agencies, like all the nursing homes, those really got hit hard at first and they were wiping out hundreds of seniors, it seems like, and maybe that has gotten better over time?
Yeah, that's a really good point, that the epidemiology of cases has changed. Now, the first, I mean, the first cases in the United States were up in Washington in a nursing home. So nursing homes in particular were, seemed to be vulnerable in part because the people there have a lot of comorbidities and in part because they're packed in and they really can't get away. So I think you're, that there's a part of that that's true. But those numbers, 5%, 2%, if you ask, you know, the epidemiologists on the front lines, what the likelihood of someone, whether they're in the nursing home or whether they work in a restaurant on Catalina Island, you know, all comers, the likelihood that they would die from coronavirus. The most current estimate is only about 0.1 or 0.2%. And that's because we probably haven't even scratched the surface on the number of people who have actually been exposed to the virus and had sort of an asymptomatic course or a minimally symptomatic course. And I think we've seen a number of folks on the island surprised that they tested positive because they were tested only because they worked with someone or they were in the household of someone with coronavirus and so they went and got tested like they were supposed to and then they end up positive and it's kind of a, "Really? I can't believe it." You know, "Yeah, maybe I had a little bit of a stuffy nose, but I thought it was seasonal allergies, not coronavirus." And so, you know, I think there's a lot more of those than we realize and that the biggest reason we've seen the mortality drop is just because we're testing all of these folks who had minimal or no symptoms. But I think that you're absolutely correct that just by virtue of where the patients came from, the initial wave was in nursing homes with really sick people and now, you know, if you follow the press, it's in bars and concerts where young people are partying and they're very low risk and so they're not likely to get it. So, yeah, so I think that's another variable that I didn't even talk about tonight. But I really hope that the thing is mutating and that we're seeing a less virulent strain as well. And that's what, if you remember from my July, I think it was, presentation, the head of infectious disease in Italy came out strongly and said, "This is not the same virus we saw even two months ago." And the World Health Organization quickly slapped him down and said, "Don't say that, it's going to make people complacent." But he said, you know, "I want to give people hope and I want to be scientifically accurate that this is not the same virus." And you may not want to hear that, it may not be part of your messaging, but the truth is the truth and I'm going to say it whether you like it or not. It led to a little bit of a fluffle in Italy.
Is there, did anybody call in, Mr. Palmer?
I don't have any comments.
Counsel or staff?
Dr. Davis, can you just speak, there's been an increase, it sounds like, in people who have recovered from having coronavirus, at least the first strain of it, and having some fairly significant after-effects long after they've no longer tested positive. Can you speak to any of that?
Absolutely, yeah. So one of the side effects of me being involved in this is that I was asked to author an online educational module for physicians, nurses, nurse practitioners. And so I'm wading deep in the literature on coronavirus and one of the new modules we released are the long-term sequelae. And immediately there was a pushback to say, "How can you call it long-term? We're only four to six months into this." So with that as the caveat, we don't really know long-term. But the way that I've tried to describe it is that what we're doing right now is we're trying to understand what coronavirus does in the context of other diseases that we know and we know well, like stroke, for example. So if coronavirus activates your clotting system and makes you more prone to having heart attacks and strokes, well, there's no reason to suspect that the long-term sequelae from a stroke due to coronavirus is any different from a stroke due to atherosclerotic disease and hypertension. So we know some of the long-term sequelae are going to be the same as the diseases that just weren't caused by coronavirus, but ultimately end you up in the same place. And the majority of the sequelae fall into that category. Now, there are some weird neurologic ones that we're just trying to understand, but at the risk of insulting the neurologists, and I think there is actually one that lives on the island who's been very complimentary up until now, probably not anymore. But there's a lot of neurologic diseases that we don't understand very well that probably involve autoimmune phenomenon to your body's antibodies attacking your own, you know, components of your nervous system, that they often carry names like Guillain-Barre or even things like Alzheimer's and Parkinson's, but that we don't fully understand the immune response. And it looks like coronavirus is going to do a whole lot of that kind of stuff where it can attack any part of your nervous system, from the brain all the way down through the spinal cord now to the nerves. And we're just now seeing these things start to manifest. And in fact, one of my closest colleague's son, who's an intensivist, seems to be fighting some kind of a peripheral neuropathy that's partially paralyzed his diaphragm, that we're all thinking is coronavirus, but they're having a hard time proving. And so there's a lot of these sort of mystery cases that are associated with coronavirus infection that look a little bit like diseases that we've seen before, but we really don't know what the long-term outcome is going to be. But for the most part, the side effects or the sequelae look like diseases that we know well. But that includes heart attacks, strokes, blood clots in the legs that shoot out to the lungs, the scarring that we see in the lungs after you've had that, ARDS and other forms of pneumonia. And so that's going to be the majority. Now, some hospitals have opened up coronavirus sequelae clinics and so the question is, you know, do you really need a specialist in just coronavirus sequelae, given that these look like other diseases and we suspect it's probably more of a marketing ploy than anything else. But there are some weird ones that we haven't seen before, but you can count those on your hands and toes and that the majority of things look like other diseases that we know pretty well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, thanks again, Dr. Davis, and I hope to hear from you again soon with good information, good news.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Do we want to go into, do we want to go into Michael's report or do we want to go into council members? Do we want to follow in the COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
So Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer will give you an update on the new guidelines from the state.
So good evening again, Mayor, members of council. And thank you to Dr. Davis for that wonderful presentation. It's actually a really good segue and dovetail into some updates that I'm going to provide for everyone. So on Friday, Governor Gavin Newsom made some pretty significant announcements to where we're headed statewide, which will definitely affect all cities and counties kind of moving forward. So everything that I'm going to be talking about was effective as of Monday, the 31st of August. And there's a lot of caveats on that, but I want to kind of start first by talking about what happened at the press conference. So what Governor Gavin Newsom announced was a new way of providing guidance for how we're going to move forward. This new guidance is now called the Blueprint for a Severer Economy. It replaces the existing county data monitoring list. So before, we had an adestation process. If you're an adestation county, then you could apply for certain things, there was different tiers. It was very fragmented and this new approach is really meant to make everything a lot simpler, make everything a lot more streamlined and hopefully eliminate the 58 different ways of doing things. So like I said before, this went into effect beginning on August 31st. This new framework is really based on four principles. It's based on a statewide approach, it's based on its simplicity, a slow approach and stringent or more restrictive measures. In order for counties now to progress, they have to demonstrate progress in two different categories. And I'll go into a little bit more about what these categories are, but one of them is the positivity rate, the other one is the case count. And counties must demonstrate progress in these two categories over a three-week timeframe before being able to move into the next tier. Counties may only move forward one tier at a time. So if your data looks really great and you can't bypass the next step, you have to kind of slowly progress. And so that's what they mean by slow and stringent. And really, moving through these tiers, the state, through the California Department of Public Health, is going to assess these indicators weekly. They are going to assign each county a tier based on their adjusted case rates and the tier status is going to be in effect starting on this last Monday. In order to advance, the county must have been in the current tier for a minimum of three weeks, as I mentioned before. Each county must meet the criteria for next tier and then the state will establish healthy equity measures on activities such as data collection, testing access, contact tracing, supportive isolation and outreach that demonstrate a county's ability to address those most impacted within the county. And they must have additional measures addressing health outcomes such as case rates, hospitalization and deaths. That's to move forward. A big thing of this is any updates to a county's status will take place following the state's review. And counties with rates in two different tiers, and I'll show you because LA is actually a really good example of this, will be placed in the most restrictive tier. So if you're doing really well in one and not so well in the other tier, you're going to automatically be placed in the most restrictive tier. So you have to bring both numbers up in order to progress forward. In all tiers, though, there are some restrictions that are going to continue to remain in effect. Essentially, concert venues, convention centers, live theaters, nightclubs and theme parks are going to continue to remain closed statewide. So regardless if you're in the most restrictive tier or if you're in the least restrictive tier, some activities such as those that I just mentioned are going to continue to remain closed. Additionally, there's going to be no live audiences at professional sports. So, you know, the governor has not really given a timeframe on when those type of events are going to come in, but I think you can start to infer that we're going to be in this for a while. Those types of events such as concerts or anything that has large mass gatherings, whether indoors or outdoors, are going to continue to be prohibited, at least until the short term. So anybody who is in, unfortunately, the event planning world and was hoping for things like convention centers or large conferences to come back, I would expect to have those remain closed at least for the rest of this year, if not into the next year. Another thing that is really important to note before I move into what these tiers actually are, is counties can still retain the ability to be more restrictive. And so you're going to see this really play out, especially in LA County, at least for the short term. Hopefully we'll eventually move forward with some significant progress, but that's really important to note. So like I said before, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read. Essentially, there's four different tiers now. Tier one, which is the most restrictive, is called widespread. This is color-coded purple. The next tier is substantial and that's color-coded red. Moderate is orange and then the least restrictive would be minimal. And under each one of these, under the widespread, this essentially will mean that many non-essential indoor businesses and operations are going to continue to remain closed. And then as you progress, they're going to slowly ease up. So as you move into the substantial tier, some non-essential indoor business operations will be closed. As you move into the moderate, some indoor business operations will be allowed to be open. And then once you get into the least restrictive tier, the minimal tier, most indoor business operations will be allowed to open, but with modifications. So this new tier system is a four-tiered system. It's got two categories, as I mentioned before. Progress must be demonstrated over a three-week period and the most restrictive status will prevail. prevail. So again, you know, with the first category, you've got new cases. The thresholds are more than seven, four to seven, one to 3.9, and then less than one. So you need to get all the way to less than one daily new case per 100,000 residents in order to move into the minimal category. In addition, because you need to have great stats in both, the positivity test, in order to move into that minimal category, would have to be less than 2%. So really, what does this mean for Avalon and specifically for Los Angeles County as a whole? We're doing pretty decent, at least right now, for the testing percentage positivity. Our seven-day average or seven-day lag is at 5%. And that threshold, we're right on the cusp, because that threshold is 5 to 8%. In order for us to move into the moderate, we'd have to have that below 5%. So we're really close. The bigger thing for us right now is, and unfortunately, I don't see this changing too fast, is the new cases. Right now, we're at a rate of 13.1. Anything more than seven means that you're gonna be in that most restrictive, that widespread category. So while we're in the red on one, we have to default to the purple category for that. So once we're able to drop that down, and we would have to have less than seven at threshold for us to move into the substantial category, would drop that 13.1% case rate to 7% case rate. And again, as we move forward too, even though we are in a category that may allow for additional businesses to be open, if the county does not allow us to, then we're gonna continue to be under more restrictive measures. Right now, LA County is contemplating, having discussions about what an approach would look like and how to lessen some of those restrictions. And I'm gonna go through some of the sectors and show you some of the differences within those sectors in this PowerPoint, but it's really important to keep in mind that right now, we're still under the default of the county health order that was last revised in August 12th. That could change within the next week or two, but right now, and I wouldn't anticipate them doing that prior to the Labor Day weekend, so it would continue to operate under the assumption that nothing has really changed for LA County. So just to illustrate some of the differences as you're moving forward, on the left-hand side is where we're at, we're on the widespread or the tier one category. If you move to the right, that becomes less restrictive. So one good example of what's happening here is on-air salons and barber shops. Statewide, if you're in tier one, you can be open indoors with some modifications, and that actually holds through each one of those phases. Again, while it's allowed statewide, LA County, under their last revised health order, because they have not amended that and they have not given any indication on where they're headed with this as of yet, we're not able to provide, to allow businesses to operate indoors. Right now, they can only operate under what's allowed under that county health order, which is modified outdoor operations. And, you know, they're kind of limited in what they're able to do. Another good example of one would be retail, and here you can see how you start with something that's a little bit more restrictive, and as you move into the other categories, some of those restrictions get lifted. So with retail operations under the tier one, you can be open for indoor operations, but with some modifications. However, you're limited in capacity to 25% of your store's capacity. As you move into the next tier, that capacity increases to a max of 50%. And then those capacity limits are then removed as you move into tier three and to tier four. The other one I'd like to highlight is like on places of worship. Right now, under tier one, only outdoor operations are allowed, so you can only do services outside. That actually changes, though, if we move into tier two. Beginning in tier two, you can have indoor services and other types of cultural or religious activities happening, but you would be capped at 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is fewer. And as you move into tier three, that increases to 50% capacity or 200, and then that 200 people or fewer limit is completely eliminated as you move into tier four, and you're just capped at the 50% capacity. Moving into just a couple others to highlight, restaurants. Right now, restaurant operations under tier one are allowed only outdoors, but that changes with tier two. So hopefully, we can do this and move into tier two as we get later into the end of the summer and into the fall season, because that's when we will be allowed to have indoor operations with some modifications. However, capacity is going to be capped at 25% or 100 people, whichever is fewer. When you move into tier three, it jumps to 50%, but with a cap on 200 people or less. And then, tier four, you get a max of 50% capacity. Bars will continue to remain closed, unfortunately, bars, breweries, and distilleries. These are basically anything without full food service. So if you're a restaurant and you've got a bar in there, you can still operate as you can today, but if you're a bar and you don't offer any restaurant or food-type services, you're gonna continue to remain closed, unfortunately, from the tier one and tier two. You can begin to open up as we move into tier three, but with modifications, and you can't even bring people back indoors into bars until the county as a whole hits tier four. So just to recap real quick, right now, LA County is in tier one. We are in the widespread category. That is because, again, as I mentioned, we are, we default to the most restrictive case, even though we're kind of in a, we have two different assigned statuses. The current health order that was last revised on August 12th is going to continue to prevail. This order is more restrictive than what is allowed by the state. So while you can see other counties may take a different approach, hopefully, LA County will continue those discussions and move forward a little bit faster. We will be in this for a minimum of 21 days, so we'll be in it for, you know, quite some time. And we'll need to drop that number down. The state will have to verify that, and once we get both numbers into the next category or better, then we'll be allowed to advance. And then, we'll have to wait again until the county revises their health order in order for us to really implement the full state order. And then additional information, because we are still under the LA County guidance, the website is there. If you go to publichealth.lacounty.gov, there's a link right there for more information on COVID-19-related guidance, and you can click that button, or you can just put forward slash media forward slash coronavirus, and all of their guidance is done. They've just revamped the website. It's a lot easier to navigate. So with that, is there any questions?
Are there any questions, Matt?
No, no questions at this time.
Okay. Council?
Yes, question, oh, sorry. What sector would public transportation fall under?
What section would what?
Public transportation. So for example, the Catalina Express.
So public transportation would be an essential service, so they're allowed to continue to operate just as we've been before.
Okay. And did I read correctly, counties are not gonna be able to request to skip a tier?
Yeah, counties cannot advance to. So if you're in the widespread and you wanted to move to the more moderate level, you have to go to substantial first, even if the data says that, you know, your case rate has basically dropped significantly, and you would qualify for that. You would have to only advance one tier. You'd have to be in that tier for an additional 21 days, hope that your numbers continue to be better, and then you could go back, you could go to the next one. That's correct.
Just a question on restaurants, knowing that restaurants will only be able to operate indoors with 50% max capacity even up until we get through tier four, and realizing that we have to be in tier one for 21 days and then two weeks in each subsequent category. So that puts us close to Thanksgiving for that timeframe if we move forward starting today right now?
Well, we could be in tier two, which would allow indoor dining services with modifications, but at a 25% capacity or 100 people or fewer, whichever one is fewer, as early as three weeks from now, so let's say the end of September.
Okay. The only question I have is, I'm assuming that we will need to extend dining on the beach that most restaurants can't, will not necessarily be able to operate at only 25% capacity, so they may have to supplement part of their capacity with outdoor operations as well? And just making sure that that's on an agenda coming up to...
Second meeting in September, we're bringing it back. We were waiting till we went through the Labor Day holiday.
Okay, thank you.
And just to note too, none of this prohibits restaurants from continuing to do delivery or takeout services.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
I guess it's simpler, but it's still the three-week tier and this. It's kinda scary. Okay, and now we'll go to council member reports.
Mayor, could I make a few comments, please?
Oh, yes.
I forgot to reflect once again that Scott Campbell is on the phone, and he will be doing a city attorney report on a new directive from the governor's office. As also, I wanted you, the public, to know, we've been working with the county for the new hospital measure that will be on the November ballot, and it has been named Measure H, H for hospital. We were lucky to get that letter. We had, did receive one argument in favor, and there was no rebuttals against that, and also just no rebuttals in general. We are gonna, I will be reaching out to the council for the week after our second meeting in September, so the week of the 21st, perhaps Wednesday, the 23rd or the 24th for the budget. Strictly, we'll just do the budget then and adopt it. It gives us a little bit more time to finalize cuts and contract reductions and making some other cuts on our budget. So I'll be asking you for what dates are best for you.
Okay, I'm good either day. Okay. And, oh, city attorney then, would you like to comment?
Yeah, this is Scott. There was some legislation that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor regarding evictions under COVID-19. The new rules are that if you are financially impacted by COVID-19, there are no evictions until February 1st, 2021, which means a landlord cannot evict someone or start eviction proceedings until February 1st, 2021. That rule applies to people that have missed rent due to COVID from the date that COVID first began in March through August 31st. After August, and after August 31st, if you wanna qualify for not being evicted from August 31st or today through the end of this year in January, you have to pay 75% of your rent. So if, again, under this new legislation, you cannot be evicted if, for reasons of COVID, you haven't paid any rent prior to yesterday, or if you paid rent up to 25% from now until February 1st, you cannot be evicted because of your failure to pay from COVID-19. The legislature will have a declaration that you'll have to sign and give it to your landlord. The landlord also has to provide it in any language that the tenant has. This still doesn't mean that you don't have to pay, eventually pay the rent. You do have to pay it. And what the legislature has done is they sped up the process for court cases on payments. If, starting in March of 2021, you haven't paid, you can go to court. Normally, it's a superior court case, which takes three to six months for a failure to pay rent. The legislature has said that these failure to pay rent goes to small claims court. So that's a much expedited procedure. So again, if you can't pay because of COVID, you cannot be evicted until February, no evictions can commence until February 1st, 2021. And lastly, nothing in the legislature impacts existing ordinances. So our ordinance, which prohibits any eviction for any COVID-related reasons through the end of the year, still applies. We do not have that. We have to pay 25%. We have a rule that you have to enter into a payment plan. So that's what the legislature's done to give some relief to our tenants, as well as ultimately say that you still have to pay it, and those will be expedited proceedings from small claims court starting in March. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
I can't hear anyone if there's a question.
No, that's okay. So just a couple of updates. One, attended a call with Edison for the island feasibility study to be able to look at sustainability over time. And I know they're gonna be doing a report soon for council and for the community, but that was an interesting call to be on and go through that information. And then, just to update on the census, we're just under 29% as of today in number of people who have completed the census. We are hoping by the end of this month to get to 60%, which would be kind of what our number should be with regards to second homes and vacation rentals. And so we do have a contest ongoing currently, and you can submit, if you have taken the census, your confirmation screen to Scarlett Casares of the Census. And that phone number, let me pull it up for you guys here, is area code 909-493-4574. And that's 909-493-4574. You can also email scarlett@casaresscarlett, that's C-A-Z-A-R-E-S dot scarlett, S-C-A-R-L-E-T-T, at gmail.com. She is an employee of the Census, but because our contest is extending a few days past the census deadline, she's worried that she may not be able to access her census email after the end of the month. And so she's asked us to go ahead and send them to her Gmail account, if you're using email as opposed to text. If you had already taken the census and worked with an enumerator to do so, and are not able to get a screenshot of your completion page, please go ahead and email or text to Scarlett anyway with your first and last name, and when approximately you completed that with the enumerator, and who you completed it with. And we will count that as a submission. We've gotten a handful of entries so far for the first and second weeks. We'll be announcing the first three rounds of winners at the end of next week. First prize is a $20 gift certificate for the Catalina Coffee and Cookie Company. The chamber has been kind enough to donate four rounds of $50 each, which goes to almost every business in town, plus an additional round of $100 for the sixth prize. And then the final prize is a $500 gift certificate from Leo's Drugstore, which of course, I think anybody could use. So please make sure to get those submissions in. The deadline to get those submissions in is the 2nd of October. It's the final Friday, excuse me, the 1st Friday of October. We'll be doing the final drawing that afternoon. But we're happy to try to incentivize the people along to get their census filled out. This impacts our school, it impacts our roads, it impacts public projects, it impacts things like coronavirus and how much funding we get from the federal and state governments, and it is extremely important to do. It's completely confidential. It does not impact your housing, it does not impact you as a citizen or non-citizen. There is no citizen question on the census, and so we're hoping to get the numbers up quite a bit over the next 30 days. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes. For those that didn't attend the conference and still need information or have any questions, please send me a message, and you can also do it on social media if you want. Thank you.
Can you give us a hint?
Yes, of course. I was just letting you know for whoever who missed the meeting for the hospital, the town hall, they still can reach out to me, and they have the option of asking those questions as well on social media.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Oh, excellent, thank you.
Question from Matt Baker. Is there any possibility of seeking funding through FEMA under a state of emergency during COVID?
Jordan and I actually have a meeting this week to discuss it. Yes, that is one of the avenues we are looking. Generally FEMA is a cost reimbursement basis. So 75% of the spend would be covered by FEMA with a local match of 25%. For signage, PBE, things of that nature, we've already spent 25,000 to 30,000. So potentially 75% of that could come back through FEMA funds. So that is something we are looking at. But it's all, to my understanding, at least a cost reimbursement basis, 75, 25.
Okay. Well, that also brings me to my next update that as part of the executive board of the Gateway Cities Cog, we met with, participated actually in a couple Zoom meetings with congressional members regarding the need for local funding and for municipalities, as well as pushing back the deadline for the census and the importance of that. I'll also have a Zoom meeting with Edison to receive that same update tomorrow and various other Gateway Cities meeting tomorrow night and a few others in the upcoming week.
And I have SCAG tomorrow, Southern California Association of Governments. So just a couple of things Denise. I believe everybody was sent the information about the casino doc and then the, that again, but when are we going to discuss that?
I believe it's slated for our next meeting, Annie.
Oh, great.
If not, the first meeting in October, as well as that's when Edison will be doing their presentation.
Okay. I'm just concerned that as time goes on and that process takes a long time and then we select somebody, we definitely lose another summer. So that was my concern. If we could have an update either, and we discuss this either in writing or about the development impact fees and where we are on that. And does anybody know the rules about drones? It seems as though, because I've gotten a couple of inquiries, they personally don't bother me, but they do bother some people. And there's been somebody who's been very active. So it seems that we discussed this a long time ago.
Yes, I think I need to unearth our memo that we had, Annie, because off the top of my head, I cannot remember what those guidelines are or if they have changed since that time.
Yeah, because they were FCC regulated, right? And then, but I don't know.
Scott Campbell, did you hear that question on drones?
Yes, I did. And the FCC is still putting very, very much limitations on the use of drones, but we can update that at the next meeting and have a memo for you.
Yeah, it was just something I, you know, it'd be nice to be able to respond and say, well, you know, we have no regulation over that or yes, there's a capacity of so many feet and you then, oh, and the chief is walking up, so he must know something.
It's regulated by the FAA.
Oh, FAA.
If you, if you go, there's a bunch of information at the FAA website. And it's typically anywhere near airports or where there's going to be other aviation assets.
So if they want to be 20 feet above my house, that's, that's not an issue? No, I mean, that's.
Not, not to, not to the FAA, it's not.
Right, okay. And I don't know if, again, it's not a situation for me, but I don't know if we have a rent so far, this is say that we need to regulate something locally. But then how are we going to track that and, you know, I mean, my goodness.
Typically, and maybe Chief could elaborate on this, but when requests that videographers or anybody who's doing filming for either as part of, under a film permit or for weddings or other events, they'll contact the city and then an email will go out to both the fire chief as well as Captain Hawking and the harbor master, letting them know the proposed date, when they were going to fly, the area that they were going to fly in and contact person. And then if anything were to happen, let's say we had a helicopter that was coming in and need to go to the hospital or something else, that we would then contact them, let them know that they needed to cease and desist immediately and lower their drone until that incident was done and then clear their airspace basically. And then they would be followed up with another call to allow them to resume operations.
Annie, I think you're referring more to the residential ones though that are flying from personal people here, non-commercial.
Yes.
We have nothing that regulates that, but that, I'll ask Scott if we can do something about.
No. I presume that we do anything, but I don't know if you guys, if you all have an opinion one way or the other. I mean, I, it's only one drone that I've been seeing almost daily, but that's okay. And so unless you have total opposition, I mean, you live up on the hill and I don't know if it impacts you at all.
I mean, I see, we see him a lot. I have only ever had one encounter that I felt was a violation of personal space, but I don't know, I've not heard any particular complaints, so I don't really have a position on it. But happy to discuss it further if anybody else would like to.
Don't you think we have other things to work on?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is that okay, let this one lie? And whoever the gentleman is that wrote me, and my neighbor Cazza Street, hopefully you heard this. Okay. Oral communication.
There was one thing I forgot.
Sure.
At the last planning commission meeting, they were discussing CUPs on if it was, had been changed over to the new policy. Is that going, is that ordinance going to come back to this council to approve and when?
Yes, and I don't have an exact date. We'll shoot for October.
Okay. It's just that they had, they weren't sure if it had been passed on if it goes with the property or with the owner.
That's what we talked about and I think we all agreed out.
But I don't, but I don't think the ordinance was ever brought to the council to be voted on. That was before this council.
Right.
So.
Denise, do you remember if we finalized that?
I don't think it came back. It had to go back to the planning commission for some clarification and that's where it lied. So as Michael said, we'll try to get back as soon as we can.
Okay.
I just wanted to see if it was coming back, so.
Yeah, the planning commission had already inquired about that at the last planning commission meeting and we told them that we'd be following up.
Okay, great. Okay. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people in the public to discuss items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Mr. Palmer, do we have anybody calling in?
I do not have any comments.
Okay. Captain?
Hello?
Okey dokey. We'll move on to consent items.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the August 18, 2020 regular city council meeting. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $1,349,484.97. And that's from the time period of August 8th through August 21st of 2020. Number three is to adopt the resolutions amending the memorandums of understanding between the City of Avalon and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2295, the Avalon Municipal Employees Association, management and confidential employees. And I did get response back from all of them. They were good with the changes. I did provide the council with those resolutions in case you wanted to read through them, but everything was outlined in the staff report. Number four is the contract with Townsend Public Affairs and is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Townsend for grant management and legislative advocacy for one year term for the cost of $4,000 per month. I did also provide a memo to you outlining some of the things. All their COVID-related, since this has hit, have been invaluable to the City of Avalon. Daily, we get updates from them, which Michael uses in our briefings to those 24 people that are on the calls on Monday and Wednesdays. So they are invaluable to us.
Just a question. What is mode shift feasibility study grant? Is that transportation of some sort? Jordan?
Yeah. That was, the mode shift is basically the act of transportation plan. It's an element of the act of transportation.
Okay, because there's another, okay, because there's the grant as well. Okay. All right, council, it's a pleasure.
I'll move to approve items 1 through 4. I'm consent.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Tonight you get to use your buttons, please.
Yeah, okay. All ayes.
Good job, Sarah.
Okay, item number five.
Well, that was your first official button. Nice. Item number five is an amending of our ordinance. Michael Palmer has been working with BBNK on this, so he can give you a really brief summary of this and if you have any questions for him.
Sure. So good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is introduction and waiving of all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon to amend Chapter 12 of Title VI of the City of Avalon's municipal code, which will basically bring us to, into compliance with the Department of Water Resources Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. I'm going to use the acronym MLO instead of saying that mouthful. It's also to adopt a resolution which will update our guidelines for implementation of the city's MLO. And I'm just going to give a very brief background and overview of what this ordinance actually is. So back in 1993, the MLO ordinance was enacted from the 1990 Water Conservation and Landscaping Act. This was updated in 2009 from the state's side and again in 2015 at the height of a drought. The 2015 update via an executive order directed the California Department of Water Resources to update the state's MLO to prevent water from being wasted on irrigated landscapes and requires local agencies to either adopt the state's MLO or a local equivalent. And really what the Water Conservation and Landscaping Acts meant to do is to increase water conservation and efficiency in landscape design, the installation, the maintenance and the management to reduce water waste and overwatering. Less the issue here, a much bigger concern, especially in communities that have a lot of really big green belts, a lot of medians. Less impactful here, we just don't have a lot of landscaping, period. A lot of, not a lot of space. So back in 2015, the city updated one section of the MLO, which was regarding the design of landscape-related stormwater management practices. However, the state did not adopt a local equivalent. So there was a couple pieces that we needed to look through and we need to adopt. This is really important because a lot, a couple cities have already been sued for not being in compliance. We want to make sure that we are in compliance and we bring the city back up to what the state standard is. So the proposal before you today is to bring us into compliance with those policies and guidelines. I'll just highlight a couple of significant updates to the DWR's 2015 MLO. This includes lowering the threshold from 2,500 to 500 square feet or more for new construction projects with aggregate landscape area. This is aggregate landscape area would be things like concrete or deconstructed or pebble or any other kind of aggregate. The other thing it does is any qualifying landscape projects must have pressure regulators and master shut-off valves. Irrigation emission devices in qualifying projects must meet national standards. Basically what they want to do is they want to ensure that these sprinklers that are being installed or these irrigators are high efficiency, that they reduce the amount of water that is going out. And we're also trying to reduce the amount of overwatering into hardscapes. So part of that is median strips cannot be landscaped with high water, high water use plants. We don't really have a lot of medians that this would apply to, but we do want to bring us back up into compliance. And then the last thing I'll highlight is projects with landscapes under areas of 2,500 square feet must comply with the MLO requirements by conforming to the measures outlined in, in the proposed ordinance. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, it really doesn't affect us much, that's for sure. I mean, unless there's some big development going on somewhere, but, but this is great. I understand we need to do this, so is there emotion?
All the commotion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon to amend Chapter 12 of Title VI of the City of Avalon Municipal Code to comply with the Department of Water Resources Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance to adopt resolution updating guidelines for implementation of the city's water efficient landscape regulations.
I'll second.
Second?
Wait, who is my second? I'm sorry.
You're Sarah.
Thank you.
Call for the vote?
All ayes. This will come back at the next council meeting for a second reading.
Great, thank you. Item number six. Dan Henley?
To remind you, you did get one written communication on this.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing this item tonight. Before you, was discuss the need for a program that supervises children in a school day program for working parents of children first year, fourth grade and direct staff to implement accordingly. In July, late July, we had some parents reach out to us and staff asking if we could run a program similar to the day camp program we ran it over the course of the summer. We took that information, we saw, you know, a thread on Facebook, people asking about it, coming up with ideas of how they could, you know, set up their own pods throughout the community to do it. So we took that information and put it into a survey that went out in early, late July, early August, asking the questions that you see before you in the staff report. Basically, we were looking to ascertain how many people might be interested in the program, what the financial implications would be if we ran it real similar to the day camp program, what hours of the day, are they looking for a daycare program? Are they looking for after school program? What access do they have to internet? What access do they have for, to computers? And would the fees that we propose, which are the, in here was 17 and 70 for a week, $17 a day and 72, 70 for a week, would that be detrimental to be able to be involved in the program? And what ages were we looking for? We anticipated we were looking probably at the younger kids that might have the need for it, with the older kids being a little bit more computer literate, being able to stay home and being a little more independent. And then what kind of access to middle school or high schools with their need there as well? So with that, our take was away where that we could run a program that would be similar to our day camp program. Derek County protocols for the day camp program that we adhere to really closely. We kept both our junior guards program and our daycare program on the smaller side. We look to keep both of the programs eight to one ratios, eight children to one instructor. We do something real similar to that. I use junior guards as example. In years past, the county had 40 in the program. Over town, they have upwards of 120 per session. We kept ours at 24 for the session with three instructors, so we kept that eight, eight to one ratio for that. The program would be branched out onto multiple locations. We were looking for outdoor locations that could accommodate seating area for eight to 10 children, but also have the ability to, if we had to move indoors for inclement weather, to be able to give us that ability. So the areas that we're looking for, and we just looked, you know, pretty closely to what we've already been using. We've been using Singing Waters, the Christian Center for Meals and Wheels program. And they've got a nice patio outside that could parlay into an indoor program if we needed to. Tremont Hall is not being used right now as a community facility. So the parking lot outdoors and again indoors if needed. And then we reached out to Avalon Community Church for their outdoor patio, although it's a smaller area, we think we can get six to eight kids out there. And then the fallback would be the team center if we needed to be indoors. And discussions with the school, and now that we're starting to see this, today being the first day of school, kids are starting a little bit later. They're starting at nine o'clock and going till about three o'clock. Again, we're doing this towards first to fourth graders initially. We would have staff arrive at 8:30, do write down procedures as part of the, you know, protocol to whatever areas that were going to be used and have children arrive at 8:45 and be ready to go come nine o'clock. Pre and post programs that sanitation would be involved throughout this, like we did in our summer programs, wellness checks for both staff coming in as well as kids, so temperature checks and just oral. Parents would not be allowed to leave until they had their wellness check. Facial masks would be worn throughout unless eating or drinking. Social distances, the tables would be socially distanced. Would be one child, one child per site or per table, which would be distant. No shared equipment, limited exposure. Kind of the hardest part for the staff of the summer was the limited exposure to the kids. is the limited exposure to the kids. You know, you want to be able to throw them a high five and, you know, that avoids and those type of things, but strictly socially distance the staff as well. And that kids in the same family would be put in the same pod. We have a first and fourth grader, which isn't necessarily typical for, you know, a program, but to kind of reduce any type of spread, that was one of the recommendations, one of the guidelines for this. So, with that, I just want to open up that discussion. I was asked to reach out to ParsAC, and I did. I talked to the representative this afternoon, and he was very similar to what I heard when I'd asked about the summer programs, that, you know, certainly follow all protocols, you know, mass need to be done, social distancing need to be done. There is a specific waiver, a COVID waiver, that along the general liability that the parents would have to sign, there's a COVID waiver that they would have to sign as well, saying it's a high-risk program. It's a high-risk, you know, type of an event. And that waiver would be signed as part of the file, as well as signage at all our sites, which we've done at our park sites. You know, we've got signage saying, you know, it's COVID, it's a high-risk area, there's shared uses here. So, we'd have signage throughout that. So, with that, I'd like to just open it up for discussion. We would anticipate using the staff that we had for, some of the staff that we had for our summer camp program, our junior guards program, to come back and assist us with that. So, very used to the protocols that we've had in place. We anticipate, if we were to move forward, we would try and get this onboard Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, so a week from today. We would diligently to try and get it online by the end of the day tomorrow and then start registrations. And then, we would take eight, 10 kids at a time, put them at a site. If we had another eight, 10, we'd start a second site, and we think we could accommodate 20 to, 24 to 30 kids at least initially, and then start a waiting list thereafter. As we went through the survey process, in a pretty short period of time, we had 15 recipients of the survey, fill out the survey. You know, there were 15. Four of them were in Spanish and 11. And the overall need at the time was, you know, 13 of them said, yes, we're looking for some type of program, and two are not looking for a program. So, we continue to hear that there's a need out there. We've got more and more people asking about it and just want to get council's blessing before we move forward. I would be more than happy to, on a, you know, two-week period of time, you know, report back, you know, our findings and what kind of registration and how things are going, at least on the onset of it. And our hope is that, you know, the kids will be back in school in, you know, October, mid-October, November. We're planning on this through, at least the first semester, so just till after the first of the year, if we need to go that far out. But hopefully, they're back to school before then.
Questions?
And the fiscal impact to the city is?
Let me just ask one, and add to that. So, fiscal impact, thank you. We are going to charge this as a fee-based program, you know, anticipate having a fee-based program, using the summer camp fees, a real similar, you know, structure. Our Day Camp is about six hours, and this is about the same time, six to seven hours, you know, a day. So, we would use those fees. So, combination of those fees, and then, we were granted, actually had to go back, we've been blessed by the Catalina Island Yacht Club with multiple program grants. And one of them is a teen center grant we got for $20,000. We reached out to them, you know, going into this fiscal year, knowing that finances is going to be difficult. They were able to donate $20,000 to our teen program to be able to staff it three days a week, two staff, you know, per day. And so, I had reached back out to them, saying, teen center most likely is not going to start until the first of the year. We've missed a, you know, a half of a year. Apparently, use $10,000 of that $20,000 to, you know, put towards this program. And they were fine with that. So, we have $10,000 that would go towards, you know, assisting in the additional staff pass for it and then scholarshiping children that might be, or families that might be financially in hardship with, you know, with a fee for such a program. So, there would be no general fund money out of it. There are some other monies out there that I think if we, you know, did run this and we needed to rely on, we could call on. But for the time being, with my projections, we ran one site. We are set for, you know, with the money, with the fees that we would be charging and the monies that we got through the donation for 31 weeks. If we ran two sites, we would be at 16, just about 15, 16 weeks would take us right to the first of the year, which I kind of think is where we'll end up with, you know, one to two sites. If we ran three sites, it would take us up to mid-November in funding. And then, we would need to reach out, and there's some opportunities to reach out for some additional funding.
So, I have a question. For the kids that are in school right now, how many hours do they have to be signed up online?
So, I had a conversation with some administrator on Wednesday of last week in regards to it. My understanding was from nine to noon, about two hours, hour and a half to two hours of that block was going to be online. And then, they've got some workbooks that they're working out as well. And then, in the afternoon, you know, from lunch, you know, lunch on, it's, you know, in and out of being online. So, it was more of a bulk in the morning and then working out of books a little bit later in the morning and then kind of in and out later in the day.
So, you know that, hopefully, you know, I'm supportive of the city getting involved in this totally. I'm just with, I guess, a couple little concerns, and I'm sorry I didn't discuss with you before, but it doesn't really matter. The amount of money per week for a family, that's a little bit scary for me. I mean, for families, I don't know, $72 a week. When you had, of the people that said it would be a problem, 10 of the 14 said that would be a problem to pay. So, as they said, that's a deterrent. But then, so I'm kind of wondering on the hours, if, we don't have them here eight or nine hours a day, so I don't know how much we're really going to be able to help the working person. Maybe part of the day and then two or three hours a day, you're still going to have to find somebody else to take care of their kids, I would think, right? Because assuming those people work at five, if I go to work at noon and work till eight, so I guess, and I know you can work it out, but those are the kind of concerns I have is, it's number one. Do we need to do five or six hours with each kid? Could we reduce that? Being it doesn't seem to solve the childcare problem very much. If we're basically trying to be more of a tutorial, then what would be the best hours for tutorial? If they're supposed to be on the machine, if they're supposed to be on the machine from nine to 12, we're basically saying we're taking over the parent's responsibility to get their education, correct? And help them with their education.
Yeah, so we're not looking to be tutors in this program. We're looking just to supervise those that are, for children that are working, supervise their schooling as, you know, parents who are at work, giving them the ability to go to work. I see what you're saying in regards to, we're not, you know, eight to five, so we may not meet all those needs. But we are trying to meet the needs at least during the school day.
Another little concern I have, because I'm already hearing stories on day one from people about children in other Haiti. I would like us not to see, to take care of children that are problematic. If they're going to come and they're not going to participate and they're not going to be with their, kind of like the kids that go to the library and they just, you know, it's just, there's a little bit of a supervisor there, but not really. I would like us to have some rules so that if a child really isn't getting with the program, we have to say, I'm sorry, because you're not licensed teachers, you're not whatever, and so I don't want to burn out the staff. You know what I'm saying? Is that fair? Yeah. Anyway, sorry, thank you for hearing me. And I'm a little concerned about the dollar amount. I think when Cindy asked what's the impact to the budget, if you budgeted it out with the staff, is that, and I'm sure you did the budget, is that $100,000 and then, but we're looking to recoup, you know, 80 based on your numbers and then 20 out of donations or more?
No, it's 100% funded through donation.
I know. But you must have done a budget to say, this program through the first semester is going to cost this much, right? Okay. And I don't know what that number is. And then, and then, again, the number, I'm a little concerned if, and I was asking Dan earlier. So, I don't know. How many kids are in first and fourth grade? Couple hundred.
I was able to get those numbers. Bear with me, I've got them here. So, first grade, there are 32 students. Second grade, 34. Third grade, 42. Fourth grade, 30. And then, we went up through fifth grade, 48. So, 217, 217 students.
Okay. So, you have 217 students, and just of the people who responded, you had 13 yeses that they need supervision during school hours and two that didn't. That's a huge percentage. That's a huge number of kids. That's 87%. So, you do 87% times 217. That's a lot of kids. And we're only looking to be able to serve 24 to 30. And that's better than nothing. I'm not saying that. But then, if you take that same number down, that same percentage down to, can you afford this? That's a high number. So, if that's 87%, that's a, maybe. So, I'm just concerned that we might need some, I'm not saying city funding, but some creative funding for this, whether it be sponsorship, sponsor a kid or something. Because if it's a matter of first come, first served, how do you just, you know, it's kind of like doing the, doing the vending thing. It's like, do you give so many to the low income and so many to the ones that can't afford it? Other than first come, first served, that makes me a little bit nervous because only, we had so few responding.
So, if I can, if I can add, and if this, you know, hopefully, it correlates to, you know, what was sort of doing the school day program. During the summer, and granted, you know, we've got working parents at the same time. We've got some that use the summer Day Camp program as a need for childcare. We are seeing, we saw 16 kids. We didn't see, you know, 75 kids in a long waiting list. We had probably a couple kids we weren't able to accommodate. Pre-COVID summers, we've seen the numbers up in the mid-high 20s on our fuller days. So, we think that's kind of the number that need the program. And in regards to the funding for this, what I, how I budgeted, basically eight kids per pod. We could get 10, so there's a little bit of room for, you know, a little bit more revenue there. And I took four of those kids at $18 a day and then four of those kids scholarshiped, so 50% scholarship. So, there is some, you know, there is some room there also. Came up with a, you know, total weekly rate of revenue. It's costing us about $750 a week for staffing in one site, and that's snacks, a little program materials and cleaning materials. So, it's costing us about $318 per week, per site, to run a site. And then, I just took that number, divided into the $10,000 if we had one site, you know, double that if we had two sites. So, that's how I got how long, you know, the kind of run rate with that $10,000 was going to be.
Great, okay. Thank you for sharing all that. I know you've been thorough in this, but it's nice to have it explained.
I'll just add, thank you. We had a wonderful conversation and you certainly answered all of my concerns, one being the liability and having anything happen or any child contract, you know, that coming back on the city. My second concern that I just, I'm supportive of a program, but one of the, one of the concerns that I have is that Long Beach Unified School District is saying no in-person classrooms. And we have all these rules from the state and from Department of Education. And so, I guess, I was really concerned about the city stepping in because everybody else says no, and the city stepping in and saying, yes, let's do an in-person gathering. says no, and the city stepping in and saying, yes, let's do an in-person gathering. So the liability to the city, if there really isn't any, then that sort of squashes all of my concerns in general. But I just feel a little bit awkward saying yes when everyone else is saying no. And I think that I would rather try it and see how much participation we have and see how maybe on a, you know, we try it for a short period, a couple of weeks or till the end of the month and see how it goes. And if we feel that, you know, we don't, we don't have any concerns, then great, let's continue. But if we have difficulty with participants or we have, you know, too many or can't socially distance or it really feels like a liability, I would like for that to be very well stated in the beginning, that if we do pull the plug on the program, it is because, for those reasons. But I am just worried because everyone else is saying no and, and we're going to step in and say yes. On the other side of that, we, we need to support our community and we need to, to find a way to make something work so that not everybody is unable to work.
Please don't get me wrong. When I talked to Parsak, the first thing he said, there's, there's liability in everything we do. But these are the things we have in place. You know, you've got your waiver, you're following protocol, you know, we've got this COVID waiver that they're signing above and beyond your general liability waiver. So there certainly is, you know, there certainly is liability. And I've spoken to staff and being around, you know, I've managed licensed childcare facilities before, you know, larger ones, as well as day camp programs, resident camp programs. It's not going to be easy by any means, but it's going to be a lot easier than just the program we were doing this summer where we're actively trying to program these kids. We're getting these kids, we're checking them in, we're putting them at a workstation and kind of supervising them. Every thirty-five minutes, an hour, we'll get them up and get the willies out a little bit, you know, stretch them out. But, you know, and that's what the day will look like. It's not active programming all day long.
And Cindy, the protocol that he's going through is exactly what we go through at Catalina Kid Ventures. And we have ten kids going there socially distant. These kids are three and four and five years old, wearing their mask the whole day. They're eight and nine hours a day. So it's, and they're washing and washing them, like he says, when you've got a daycare facility, the regulations are already so strict.
Yeah. So we had a, I won't get into the family, but we had a, a family with three kids that came to our day camp program. And one of them was just a, a little bit of a monster. And, you know, after we worked with him the first day, the second day, you know, we finally had to call the parents in and say, we can't continue like this. He's not listening, he's not staying on his, you know, his dot, he's not keeping his mask on. So they took him out of the program for a couple of days. He came back the following week and he was with us for the rest of the summer and it worked out fine. So when you, you know, ask about rules, you know, certainly it's not a right to be able to use it. I mean, you're going to need to follow procedures and protocol that will have a place to participate.
Right. Council, other comments?
I think we should try it.
Yeah.
I mean, we can retry it if it does, and if it doesn't work, then it stops. But it doesn't help the community if we don't give it a try.
Glad that Dr. Davies brought up, you know, brought to the attention that we had a bit of a scare in our day camp program. We took, you know, precautions to close it, but we didn't have anybody affected, we didn't have the parent affected, we still don't think we had it affected. We just got results from the one staff person that was leading that group today. She was negative. But, you know, our fallback is if it gets a little iffy like that, you know, we'll step back and say it's not working.
But I, again, but like Dr. Davis said, I don't want you to pull the plug. We had a, we had an incident where we thought there might be some contamination from a family member. Turned out, you know, with all the protocol in place and you do your own kind of contact tracing, the child was perfectly fine, the mother was fine, the grandma was fine, everybody was fine. So just like we pulled the plug just so quickly on that, I hopefully we go a little further in the investigation and not just pull the plug.
That was a test case, wasn't it?
Yes. I no regret it at all, Annie.
I know. But going forward, I would hate to think just because of that, if they're following in the protocol, that we wouldn't pull the plug in one day.
One thing that I can add, Pat happened to be here, our IT consultant, and I was able to take him to the sites. And so we're able to look at the viability of, you know, internet, Wi-Fi and internet at each of the locations. So there's going to be a little cost in that and that'll be, you know, part of the program cost. Road crews either reached out and shared that they potentially could help with, you know, program costs, those types of things. So there's maybe going to be some need for some additional funding. And I think there's resources out there that we'll be able to get that from. But for the call that we should be set.
Great. Any comments or questions? Okay, well, move onward.
Move on.
It's a go.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven.
This item is on the agenda this evening at the request of a couple of council members. It is, have a discussion to amend the municipal code relating to the time of our regularly held city council meetings, which currently, as we know, is at five PM. It used to be seven and we've moved it to five PM. We do have an attached sample ordinance if you were so inclined to introduce some life readings to go forward, so.
I'll start it since I started it. Look at Michael. If Michael read your eyes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Of course, you know, the reason this came about was we were looking, we've been, we've been challenged to looking at every way we can to reduce costs. And right now, the only way we've seen, most recently, the only way we'll reduce cost is through cutting staff. So I don't know if Matt had the opportunity to, to talk about what kind of finances we would be saving. However, I've read the letters from the people who say, don't, don't change it. And I'm hearing that. But I also wanted to talk about it. I don't think this thing is going to pass today in my mind, but, but I think we need to talk about how if we're moving forward into the winter months. And anyway, so there's a, we're going to discuss it. Go ahead, Matt.
Before you start, Matt, I just want to clarify though, Annie, that we, it isn't just cutting staff because that was our last measure to be able to cut the bulk. We are going through contracts, we're going through services. So I just want to clarify that, Cindy, because...
Yeah. And we were trying to look for some other ways and to also assist with that. So thank you for the clarification. I didn't mean any offense. Go ahead.
So pre-COVID, we did staff the AV room and that did create overtime. Since Jordan and I are the two that work the AV room and we're both salaried, there is no overtime cost. Pre-COVID, we did incur overtime to staff council meetings, but as we're currently staffed, there isn't an additional cost, at least from a staffing standpoint.
But, but you're changing, and just, I know, I know everybody's working hard and I understand when you're on a salary, you have to do what you have to do. But if we don't have to abuse our staff and have them work forty-three, forty-four hours a week instead of forty, I mean, I, the much as we, because you, because the less staff we have, the more stress and strain is, is on all of you. And you're having to pick up other responsibilities. So I don't want to burn out staff either. So, but I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
And one of the things we also discussed was if we had it at a lesser time, if there were people that were coming over, that needed to come to a council meeting, we might not have to pay for a hotel room and whatever. But now we're in COVID, nobody's coming over anyway. So, so in a way, I'm thinking that this now has become a little premature because if we really need to look at additional cuts and, but, you know, can the new normal be that we always have the city attorney on the phone? Because we did it in closed session, we had two attorneys on the phone. So I don't know if that was the changes we make going forward versus maybe changing the time of the meetings, so.
So I'll just add, since I was the second party involved in the conversation, and the conversation came about in a meeting with mayor and myself and the city manager, as we went through a very long, few-hour list of opportunities for cost-saving measures outside of staff and benefits. So that's just to add to that. I thought it was very interesting. It was a wonderful education process. As you can see in your packets, I had an email sent out, albeit a little bit later than I had anticipated, sent out to all the city managers of our Gateway Cities region, which is twenty-seven cities. And I, I thought it was, the information that we received back was, was very interesting in terms of what time are your council meetings? All but two of our sister cities, if you will, are at between five and seven PM, except for two cities who their meetings are at nine AM. And one of those that's at nine AM is a once-a-month meeting. So that put into some perspective. And then another question that I asked was, how, have there been any changes for your city council meeting as a result of COVID? And a majority of the city council meetings have moved online only via Zoom or a go-to meeting. There's only a couple that I've seen that are live meetings or in-person meetings, which is slowly starting to move into sort of a hybrid and then potentially into, you know, going live shortly. So I, I felt that that was worth the opportunity to put this on the agenda so that we can see, one of the areas that we're excelling very well is that we are together live, we are able to be socially distanced, and we are able to have the public participate in person, outside, even though not in the council chambers themselves, but outside and able to come in and give their oral communications in person. That is not the case in all the other cities. So just adding that in. And then city staff gave us information on, I just want to say maybe fifty other cities on this graph. I'm not sure the exact number.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven on this graph here, starting from the larger cities, Los Angeles, San Diego at ten AM, going into, you know, next largest cities, Indian Wells, Santa Barbara at one to two-thirty PM start times. So it, it isn't unheard of, but a majority of the meetings in Southern California that we see based on this is between five and seven PM. So with that, another of the concerns that we've experienced, at least in the six years that I've been on the, both of us have been on the dais here, is that it's, it's not unheard of over and over and over again in, in a lot of our meetings that we're here till ten, eleven o'clock at night with some, we need to have conversations publicly and we need to take whatever time it needs to, to go through those conversations. And generally speaking, when we do have those difficult conversations, they're very emotionally taxing and they're very difficult. And so another compromise that I thought of was, which I've seen through this process of education, is there's quite a few of the cities that do start their closed session before their council meetings. So that being, you know, maybe that would be four o'clock if we had one, maybe that once a month or, or, you know, once every two months when we do have a closed session, starting that a little bit earlier. Because that would, that would help us to be able to have our legal team, who needs to be present, or others, consultants or whatnot, be present in the closed session portion and allow us to still start our meeting, say at five o'clock, and do our closed session first. So that when we're done with our, our meetings in general, sometimes those difficult conversations that we, we can sort of just move through the end of our evening rather than, you know, that being the bulk of the difficulty earlier. And the public doesn't participate in closed sessions. So that wouldn't be a hindrance in terms of being open and available. So that's all my points for why this is on the agenda. I'm happy to keep it at five. I'll throw out the offer of closed sessions starting at four. But just to share with the community the rest of the reasons why we did that.
Listen, do you have an opinion?
You know, I actually did want to keep it at five. It seems like the concern is, you know, people want to be involved and that's what we're here, we're here for them. So I actually like your idea. If we did have a closed session, to have it beforehand and then keep it at five.
Okay. Here Michael goes. Since I got elected to city council this last time, I had been saying we need to change from five to six because of COVID on my side in that with the boats changing times as to when guests arrive, it has made it difficult on some days to get here. When you first moved, when, when a previous council first got elected, one of the first things on their agenda was to change the time of meetings from six to five. And I was able to lobby them not to do it at that time, but then you guys ended up doing it later on. There's a lot of people that get off of work at five. So they now have to go home and rush to try to see a meeting on TV or to be here in person. There's another way of fixing the issue in that you also change the way we, the, the median setup on the agenda in that we do all the department heads, we do city managers' report, we do council members' report, all at the beginning of the meeting, when that all used to be at the end. So to me, it's always been taking more away from the public, being able to voice what they had to say and more of the council putting their agenda in front. Bottom line on this is that we're elected to be here to represent our community. And however long it takes for us to make a decision, then that's what we were elected to do. That's what we've committed to. I mean, I'm willing to stick at five. Some days it does get a little tough when I have to run up, go home and back over here. But I am committed to five. Changing it and taking that availability from the public would just really hurt me.
I just want to chime in on that comment alone because I've, I remember hearing that from you before. A lot of, of my particular members of the community that I spend a significant amount of time talking to are servers, work in the restaurants. They're working during the whole meeting anyway. There's only a small portion of the community that is not working at any given point. And so five o'clock for a lot of what I get involved in in the community, everybody's working at five o'clock or just starting their, their work evenings. So I just want to be fair and say when you're saying the community gets off work at five, it's a portion of the community. It's not the community. You're talking about the business community potentially that gets off at five, you know, banker's hours. But there's a significant amount of our community that works in hospitality and that is all evening as well.
And I know for the, for the population that usually shows up at these meetings anymore when we have those, they were an older population that didn't work. And so they didn't like being here till late at night. So that's why they were very happy with the five o'clock. It worked very well for them. And I know, and we talked about if I'm a business person and I have something on the agenda that is of concern, I'm able to get off of my place of business to go take care of that. Whether, you know, Steve, Steve Bray comes more than anybody, I think, and he works every night and he doesn't start his business till, uh, till five at night. So that's why, thinking about people like him to come a little earlier. But I realize you work a regular job and thank goodness, so, and Lisa, I don't know your hours. So I mean, it sounded like we want to keep...
I believe we all work regular jobs. We just all work different hours.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not to be at our convenience, it's supposed to be at the public's convenience.
But I don't think anybody ever said it was at our convenience. I'm talking about, I work twelve to fourteen hour days, six days to seven days a week. So it doesn't matter to me. Whenever we have a meeting, I'm going to leave my place of business and come to a meeting. So I have no issue with that. It never was at any part of this. This was never about us individually. When it started, two weeks ago, the conversation was about a cost-saving measure. And then as it got more and more, and as I started looking into other cities doing their closed session first, I started thinking about, sometimes we're calling Scott Campbell at ten o'clock at night and, and one, two, three others at that late at night. I'm trying to be considerate of, of them as well. And I thought, well, the, the closed session does not impact the community. So maybe that's an option to do that and also make it, you know, easier for, for those that call in for closed session. But this is not about me. It's not about what works, what works for us, the five of us, a timing. This is, it wasn't about that at all.
And I have had nobody complain in the last three or four years we've been doing this about five o'clock. About starting the meetings at five o'clock. I know, so.
So my, my input on this, I, Michael and I have had discussions over the last few council meetings about starting time and leaving work early. And I usually, like Cindy, I'm doing, you know, ten to twelve, fourteen hour days, six to seven days a week, especially during COVID, with a little staff still. So having to leave staff, my crew early from my job and have them know that they're on their own for those few hours at the end of the day where there is regular hours for that operation that wraps up around five or six, you know, it's, it's something that I've asked them to, to allow. When I decided to run for council, there were four or five of us on staff as opposed to two. So it's a big difference in that area. Personally, my biggest question in terms of the staff savings when I saw this come up was, one, if it was, and thank you, Matt, for answering the question regarding Jordan. I never asked Jordan if he was salaried or hourly, so that was nice to learn. And so knowing that the actual cost for staff at the moment may not be necessarily a huge potential increase by keeping it at five o'clock, or even if we were going to move it later, but keeping it at five o'clock is where I'm kind of leaning towards right now. My question was actually for city staff, for, for department heads specifically and city administration, if there's a detriment to moving it earlier because you're then losing already shortened hours to having to prep and be ready for council meetings earlier in the day and losing those couple of hours of prep time and/or other work time.
No, whatever the council deems is appropriate is good with our staff and we would plan accordingly. So we are not... Can I address a couple of things though?
Me.
So prior to a salaried employee being our filmer right now, we did have two other employees that have since been laid off that were hourly. So when we entered into COVID before they got laid off, we adjusted their hours the next day, so we weren't doing overtime. But prior to that, it was overtime. And the first thing that we changed in the city council agenda at the request of council because people, the residents, were saying, we don't get to hear the council's comments and what they report out when you do it at the end of the evening. So we moved that first to the beginning of the evening. Then in around January of two thousand and eighteen, when I became the interim city manager, I kept hearing, we don't know what the department heads are doing, we don't know what you guys are doing. So I asked the department heads to start coming giving report outs. So any suggestion, you just please give me the policy of what you would like, how you want the agenda to, to lay out, and I'd be more than happy to change and adjust that. And as far as a closed session, I would suggest that if we did that, it's on an alternate night then, but still at five o'clock or whatever our start time is, only because of the privacy issue of closed session. And when we have it late at night, I know that there's nobody else in our building. And when they did this building, there is no soundproofing. So there would be no secrecy.
And then the other thing with if we did closed sessions beforehand, we'd have to make sure that whatever time we started, that it had to end by the five o'clock time.
When we've done it prior, yes, before though, I think, right? We have planned it many, there's been quite a few times, Michael, where we started at four, three-thirty, yes, and we had to have a hard stop time unless the city council agenda reflected that it, the regular meeting would start at it after, no.
And in the day, they used to sometimes be able to provide us something to eat, remember, on those, on those big ones? Those days are gone, Annie. I must always, so you're going to have to eat my little snack things, those little snack. Okay, so what seems to be the consensus at this moment?
Leave it alone.
Keeps the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah.
Lisa?
And I had forgotten about the closed session, so that could have saved us a few minutes of discussion. That's okay. Our confidentiality, I'm sorry, not closed session.
But I would like to point out that this council has not been here at all past ten o'clock at any of our council meetings. I just wanted to point that out.
What, this, this group right here? Oh heck yeah, there's nothing on the agenda because nothing's really happening.
In the height of COVID, even in the height of, of what we were making, what we were going to go meeting every week, we never...
Oh, I, I understand.
The discussions never went on and on and on.
Yeah, yeah. Tim might be a little much, but I mean, the thing is all, because all of this COVID stuff is being done at staff level and they're just giving us great reports. So again, that's why I want to be gentle with our staff. Okay, if there's no other business, we're going to say goodnight to Tony.
Goodnight, Tony.
Goodnight, Tony, and meeting adjourned.
Thank you.